Uh, let us ask, ask guidance from the Almighty Allah. Bismillahirohmanirohim. Alhamdulillahirobbilalamin arrohmanirrohim. Maliki yaumiddin iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nastain. Ihdina sira'tal mustaqim. Sira'tal ladzina ana'amtalehim ghairil maghdubi ala'ihim waladzollin. Amin ya robbal alamin. Allahumma arinal haqqa haqqan warzukna tibaa. Wa arinal baatila baatilahu warzukna astinabah. Allahumma kialhazal jama'a jamam marhumma waj'al mimba. Adita farruqinat faruka ma'suma. Iyya robbana inna samyaana munadi yunadi lil imani an aminu bi rabbikum fa amana. Robbana gufillana wa kafira'ana sayyatinawatafana ma ala'abrar. Walhamdulillahirobbilalamin. Please take your seats. The Secretary General, you're directed to determine the role, the existence of quorum.
Role call of the Honorable Members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. Abbas Ahmad, Abbas Harun, Abbas Basit, Abu Mujib, Alamiya Laysa, Alauddin Musbel, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Eddy, Amboluto Suharto, Aminuddin Abdullah Jiz, Ampatuang Baytan, Anetin Susana, Antao Muhammad Queli, Arnado Marian, Asnavi Dan, Babau Ali Muntaha, Balindong Pangalian, Basman Anna Tarhata, Kandau Bai Maleha.
Present, Paul.
Nirlangalan Hashimi, Lumama Al Bahsyah Ilaiha, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Suharto, Estino Matarol, Gayak Abdullah, Gera Adwad, Haji Abdullah Khalid, Hasim Abdullah, Hassan Hatimil, Iqbal Muhager, Ismail Rasul, Yajurri Raisa, Chakirri Muslimin, Chikiri Al Bakil, Kahalan Don Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Long Benjamin, Long Dong Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makakuwa Adrow, Makapa Arab Dawa, Makasalong Margiani, Makatanong Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawil Baileng, Mastura Ishak, Matalang Japarapulo Mikael, Mawalil Amir Bahar, Mendoza Freiling, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakkal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Norreda, Mitmug Rasul Junior, Munius Hussain, Uranon Swaeed, Pakasim Ubaidah, Pak Abdul Wahab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita, Parkasio Rangel, Piyang Ramon Senior.
Present.
Ramos Jam. Salindab Said, Salik Ali, Sanki Ali, Semao Mariaser, Semaromyo, Shek Said, Silungan Aida, Sinulinding Kadil Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Tago Paisalin.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, wabiinas ta'inas. Assalamualaikum wr wb. Mr. Speaker, with fifty members of the parliament physically responded to the call and four responded. We have a total of fifty members of the parliament responded both physical and virtual. We therefore certify Mr. Speaker the presence of quorum.
With the certification of the Secretary General as to the existence of the quorum, we will proceed with today's order of business. Lower Leader.
Bismillahirrahmani rahim. Assalamualaikum wr wb. And good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my courtesies to the Presiding Officer, Deputy Speakers and colleagues in the Parliament. Today, we are um very happy to be in the company of the following guests, special guests from the Japan International Cooperation Agency Nikai Incorporated and uh the Bangsa Moro Planning and Development Authority. For the JICA headquarter, from the JICA headquarters, please arise to be recognized uh the President of JICA, Akihiko Tanaka.
Deputy Chief Secretary in the Office of the President, Masataka Takeshita. Senior Director in the Office of Peacebuilding, Ryutaru Murutani. Director for Southeast Asia Department Division Five, Takehiro Kido. Officer in the Southeast Asia Department Division Five.
Yes, sir. When it comes to chicken, I'm going to say, you know, I'm going to say, you know, I'm going to say.
It's a pluba, isn't it? It's a pluba. It's a pluba, isn't it? It's a pluba.
Photographer Harvey Tapan. Okay, our friends uh in the barn, Advisor to the Chief Minister, Naoyuki Ochiay. Advisor on Budget and Development Planning, Yokiko Sano.
Nagib Sinarimbo of the Minister, Ministry of Interior, Local and Local Government. Minister Ahmad Brahim, the Minister of, the Ministry of Natural Resources and Energy. And of course, uh Minister Musli Minsema of the Ministry, Ministry of Labor and Employment. We would like also to acknowledge the presence of Director General Muhyajrin Ali of the Bangsa Moro Planning and Development Authority. Director General Roslini Alonto of the uh MTIT Ministry of uh Trade, Investment and Tourism. Is she there? Of course, uh Director General Danilo Ong of the Ministry of Public Works. Director General Wendell Jankalan of the Office of the Chief Minister. I director, I Director Wendell Jankalan. Of course, Director Ismail Gemel of MAFAR. And of course, uh the Chair of the Bangsa Moro Board of Investments, together with his uh officials, uh Chair Muhammad Pasigan. Lower Leader, what is your pleasure?
And Director General Ismail Ibrahim.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Director Ismail Ibrahim, you are here.
From MHSE. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the session to give way for the JICA President to address the Parliament.
Session is suspended to give way to the, the message of the President of the Japan International Cooperation Agency. Honorable Vice Speaker.
Honorable Vice Speaker of BTA Parliament, Omar Semma. Honorable Chief Minister of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Ahud B. Ibrahim. Distinguished Members of BTA Parliament, everyone present here today. Assalamualaikum. Mangandang Hapon, Osa Inyon, Nahat. Konnichiwa. It is a great honor and privilege as the President of Jaika to have this precious opportunity to speak in front of the Members of BTA Parliament. It has been seven years since my last visit to Kotabato City in 2015. Today, thanks to the tremendous efforts of all of you with the people living in this region, the peace process has significantly advanced. I sincerely congratulate on your tireless and constructive efforts in achieving this great progress. This week, you are celebrating the fourth anniversary of Bangsa Moro Foundation Day. And I feel honored to be present at this very special time for the Bangsa Moro people. Jaika has been committed to the peace in Mindanao for decades. In 2002, the Japanese government announced the Support Package for Peace and Stability in Mindanao. Consequently, Jaika has always been closely working with you. For instance, then Jaika President Ogata Sadako visited Camp Darapanan in 2006 and met with MIL Chairman Alhaji Murad Ibrahim, followed by a meeting with then-President Gloria Makapagal Arroyo in Manila. Those dialogues confirmed a mutual strong commitment to the peace process. Eventually, Japan launched a new comprehensive assistance package called Japan-Bangsa Moro Initiative for Reconstruction and Development, also known as J-BIRD. Then President Ogata's message at the time that development will contribute to achieving peace, this message gave hope for the peace in Mindanao. Since then, we have been working together, believing that realizing human security is the foundation for peace. Actually, this is my second time to serve as the Jaika President. In my first presidential term from 2012 to 2015, I made four visits to the Philippines. I chose Kotabato City as the first stop of my business trip in 2012. In 2014, I also attended the historic signing ceremony of the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro between the Philippine Government and MIL at Malacanian Palace. Shortly thereafter, I directed our staff to start what we call the Quick Impact Project for the quick delivery of dividends of peace to the people in this region. In 2015, I returned to this region as the last place to visit for my first term in office. On that trip, I visited Kibleg Elementary School in Upi, where two classrooms were quickly constructed under Jaika's cooperation. It was my great pleasure to have witnessed the outcome of the project and the smiles of the children. In 2015, the passage of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law or BOL was still uncertain. However, after overcoming various tough challenges, the BOL was finally enacted in 2018, paving the way for the creation of the BARM and the establishment of BTA Parliament in 2019. This esteemed Parliament is a symbol of unity and democracy of the Bangsa Moro. I'm honored to be here today to speak before the representatives of the Bangsa Moro people who have achieved this great progress. For me, the peace and development in Mindanao is very special. I'm truly happy and proud to work with all of you for the attainment of this purpose in the region, which is also essential for the prosperity of the entire Philippines. I understand that BTA and BTA Parliament are putting every effort to let the people feel the dividends of peace by respecting the diversity of people and by ensuring that everyone enjoys fairness and transparency in every aspect. In particular, the BTA and BTA Parliament have been working to create functional and constructive relationships with the government of the Philippines as well as with the local government units. You have also been tackling various difficult tasks in building foundation of governance such as drafting of the Electoral Code, the Local Government Code, and the Revenue Code. Jaika extends our utmost respect to all your actions to represent the voices of your diverse people and to your strong commitment for the peaceful future of this region. The next major milestone is the upcoming elections in 2025. Needless to say, it is important that elections will be transparent and fair so that outcome will be accepted by the people. In addition to free and fair elections, inclusiveness, consideration for minority opinions, and freedom of speech are also essential elements both in the parliament and in the government. To realize them, constructive dialogue and consensus building are important. And the people of Bangsa Moro have respected and worked on these difficult tasks throughout the peace process. Therefore, I'm confident that BTA Parliament will become a true model of a democratic, inclusive, and well-functioning parliament. As your longstanding and most reliable partner, Jaika continues to collaborate with you in areas such as governance and administrative capacity development, job creation, better quality of life among many others. Last year, Jaika announced the extension of a technical cooperation project in line with the extension of the transition period. Jaika also continues to support the normalization process to help decommissioned combatants and their community to improve their livelihoods by dispatching Japanese experts to share the know-how on technical and vocational education and training, and enhancing the capacity of T-VET centers in Marawi, Basilan, and Magindanao. Meanwhile, for the medium and long-term socioeconomic development, Jaika has been supporting the improvement and reconstruction of socioeconomic infrastructures in conflict-affected areas such as national roads and farm-to-market roads through financial cooperation. These efforts aim to bring opportunities for decent work, which is key for a better quality of life, prosperity, and sustainable peace. Well, at this point, I would like to express my deepest sympathies for the severe damage in this region caused by Typhoon Pai last October-November. At present, it has become increasingly important to mitigate the risks associated with climate change, including natural disasters. Jaika is now considering new areas of cooperation to make the barm more resilient against these threats. Furthermore, in response to the request from BTA Parliament, Jaika is currently planning to invite some parliament members to Japan. We hope that it will be of great help for BTA Parliament to build a better democratic system for the region, taking into account Japan's experiences, strengths and weaknesses, and lessons learned. The world has changed dramatically during the last few years due to multiple compounding crises accelerated by COVID-19, Russia's invasion of Ukraine, and climate change. Unfortunately, international peace and order are facing serious challenges. Some countries in the world have been experiencing political and social instability. However, you have made steady progress to this point in your pursuit of peace, even in the face of numerous difficulties. This is not a miracle. I know your aspiration for peace is unwavering. It has been achieved through the persistent efforts of all the people in the region. And the peace in this region does not only give hope to Mindanao or the Philippines, it gives hope to the world that consolidation of peace is possible through constructive dialogues. And peace is maintained by ensuring human security for all. Therefore, I believe that the peace process in Mindanao can be a shining model to realize human security in the world facing the multiple compounding crisis. In closing, I reiterate that Jaika will continue to contribute to the peace and prosperity of the Bangsa Moro region as a longstanding, the most reliable partner and the true friend of all people in Bangsa Moro region as well as in the entire Philippines. Thank you very much. Shukwan Jazilan. Madam In Saramappo.
May we may we invite deputy speakers to may we invite the deputy speakers to come in front for the awarding of the resolution for Jaika President and Jaika as an institution? The deputy chief minister as well.
Yeah, Mr. President. Can you please the parliament is pleased to present you with the resolution. Actually, this is Resolution Number 301, expressing our appreciation, recognition, and commendation to Dr. Tanak and substantial contributions to the Bangsa Moro. This was passed on January 17, 2023, Jumada Al Akira 24, signed. Attorney Pangalian M. Balindong. Speaker. We also would like to present you another resolution, this time for Japan International Cooperation Agency. This is Resolution Number 302. This is a resolution recognizing and commending the Japan International Cooperation Agency, or Jaika, for its support and assistance to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. This resolution was passed January 17, 2023, Jumada Al Akira 24, signed. Attorney Pangalian M. Balindong, Speaker of the Bangsa Moro Parliament.
May we invite the guests to join in the photo opportunity?
Yeah, this is for all Jaika. You're the first agency that we have granted. But this will begin for everybody, for every organization.
Thank you to the Jaika delegation. May we request the Members of the Parliament, the SSS, and the President to stay and for the ministers to join the photo opportunity. and for the ministers to join the photo opportunity? Okay, please stay, stay put. And please, can you please look, uh, to your back? And then, uh, face, face the other way. The photographer will go up there.
Session resumes. Floor leader. Please take your seats.
Thank you, um, Mr. Speaker. The next item in the order of business is the Chief Ministers' Hour. And today, for the Chief Ministers' Hour, the second Bangsamoro Development Plan, BDP twenty three, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight, will be presented. Before that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to make a motion to include the statement, uh, the speech delivered earlier by JICA president in the Journal of Today's Session.
Any second. There being no objection, the motion to include the speech of the president of the, of JICA in the Journal of Today's Session is hereby approved. What now, floor leader?
Yes, so the Chief Ministers' Hour. May we request the Chief Minister to deliver a preliminary speech before handing over the floor to the Bangsamoro Director General?
Alhamdulillahiminasyaituhanurrajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. To the Wali of the Bangsamoro, Sir Khalipanando. Our eleven speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, now represented by Deputy Speaker Omar Yassir Semah. Colleagues in the Bangsamoro Transition Authority. Members of the Parliament. Members of the Cabinet. Friends and partners for peace and development. Ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Bangsamoro. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Good afternoon. Thank you. Last month, we successfully enacted the General Appropriation Act of the Bangsamoro for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. It is worth noting that it is the first budget carefully scrutinized and passed by this new set of BTA members. It is also worth noting that in the process, the first Bangsamoro Development Plan served as one of the main reference documents from the budget preparation to the deliberation during the hearings and finally to the eventual approval of the budget. As always, we wanted to make sure that our budget is consistent with our moral governance agenda and the Bangsa-Moro Development Plan. Since the planned coverage of the first Bangsa-Moro Development aims in 2022, a successor plan was crafted by the Bangsa-Moro government to sustain the gains and pursue the development direction, priorities and strategies outlined in the first BDP 2020-2022. The successor plan is known as the Second Bangsa-Moro Development Plan covering the period of 2023 to 2028. The formulation of the second BDP was in time for the formulation of the Philippine Development Plan, the six-year medium-term plan of the national government under the administration of President Ferdinand Bonbon Marcos Jr. The plan formulation process was guided by regional agencies from the Office of the Chief Minister, such as memorandum order number 0092, directing all heads of ministries, offices and agencies for the formulation of the second BDP results matrices and the Bangsa-Moro Development and Investment Program for 2023 to 2028. The whole society of approach, the whole society approach was adopted in the formulation of the second BDP 2023-2028. It's spearheaded by the Bangsa-Moro Economic and Development Council or BDC through its five sectoral committees, namely the Development Administration Committee, Peace, Public Order, Safety and Security Committee, Social Development Committee, Economic Development Committee and the Infrastructure Development Committee. Series of planning workshops and consultations were conducted in the formulation of the second BDP, participated by BARM ministries, line agencies and offices, local government units, civil society organizations, academies, business sectors and other stakeholders in all the provinces, cities, municipalities and some barangays in the region. The second BDP was presented and approved at the cabinet level and by the BDC last December 8, 2022 and December 23, 2022, respectively. The BDC in its third regular meeting on December 23, 2022, passed a resolution endorsing the second BDP to the Parliament for approval. Hence, the government of the day seeks the support of the BTA Parliament for the approval of the second BDP. The second BDP once approved and the Parliament shall serve as a guide for all BARM ministries, line agencies and offices in formulating and pursuing their plans, programs and projects, thereby contributing to the attainment of the vision, mission, goals and objectives of the BARM. The second BDP shall also serve as policy anchor in the preparation of the budget proposals of the ministries, offices and agencies for '20 to '24 until '2028, including the programming of the special development plan for the next six years from '2023 to '2028. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, at this point, allow me to give the floor to Director General Engineer Muhyajrin Ali of the Bangsa-Moro Planning and Development Authority to present the salient features of the Second Bangsa-Moro Development Plan. A'udzubillahit taufiq wal hidayah. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the rules to give way to Bangsa-Moro Director General Muhyajrin Ali to present the second BDP.
There's a motion to suspend rule. Second, there is no objection, the motion is approved.
A'udzubillahiminasyaitanirrajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Roblis sahri sadri, woyasili amri, wahluku dater mil disani, yak kaulu koli. My courtesies to our very own Chief Minister, Ahud Balawag Ibrahim Sir, to Speaker Pangilian Balindong, represented by Deputy Speaker Omar Semah, to all the members of the BTA Parliament who are present this afternoon, to my fellow cabinet member and to all of those who are present today. Magandang hapon po. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Allow me to present to you the salient point, salient features of the Second Bangsa-Moro Development Plan 2023 to 2028. This presentation will briefly discuss the following. Allow me to walk you through the background rationale and process. We will present regional trends and prospects for development and the Bangsa-Moro's spatial strategies. From there, we shall be presenting the second BDP development framework and the sectoral trust and priorities. Let me begin with the background rationale and process. The BTA's first task during the first transition was to create a roadmap that would reflect the strategic priorities and directions for the transition period. The then 12-point priority agenda was created as a result. The agreements and conditions in the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law, BOL, and the immediate needs of the region shaped the primary agenda. It was also adapted into a multi-year development strategy known as the First Bangsa-Moro Development Plan, BDP 2020-2022. In a short amount of time, we were able to accomplish a lot for the Bangsa-Moro. Following the preliminary assessment we did last year for the first BDP, the Bangsa-Moro government recognized the transition's gaps and requirements. In anticipation of the conclusion of the first BDP in December 2022, the chief ministers issued two memorandum circular, memorandum circular number 0059, series of 2022, directing all MOAS ministries, offices and agencies to align their plans, programs and project to the enhanced 12-point priority agenda of the BARM. Second, memorandum circular number 0092, zeros of 2022, directing the formulation of the second BDP 2023-2028 and its accompanying results matrix and investment program. Directing the successor plan's preparation should begin as early as second quarter of last year 2022. The second BDP 2023 to 2028 is made up of 14 chapters, while the first development plan only had 13 chapters. We deem it critical to add a chapter on communication strategies. The first four chapters lay the groundwork for the meat of this second development plan, building up to chapters from five to 12, providing details on the sectoral challenges, opportunities, sectoral outcomes and strategies. A whole sector approach was adopted in the planning process. The five BDC sectoral committees were the mechanisms that in the four phases of the planning process. The sectoral committees are the following: DACOM, Development Administration or Governance, Economic Development Committee, Social Development Committee, Infrastructure Development Committee and lastly, Peace, Public Order, Safety and Security Committee. The Bangsa-Moro Planning and Development Authority, BDIP, as the technical secretary at the BDC, was instrumental in ensuring that the sectoral committees were mobilized in crafting the strategic direction of their respective sectors. For planning standards and principles, it is acknowledged that the key results, particularly outcomes and corresponding strategies in the first BDP remain relevant for adoption in the second BDP. The Bangsa-Moro Organic Law, BOL, serves as the policy framework and it sets the coverage and limit in terms of rights, powers and authority to exercise and mechanisms and systems to be established by the Bangsa-Moro government. The principles of moral governance serves as the guidepost in leadership and overall service delivery. It is being operationalized through these cross-cutting themes of inclusion, equity and justice in the second BDP. The strategic or critical thinking, one of the biggest investment of this planning process was strategy formulation because strategies are the direct link between initiatives and results. Several consultations and workshop were conducted to ensure that the strategies formulated were not only effective in addressing the weak problems but also have a multiplier or cascading effects. Evidence base. In setting the situational analysis or baseline, official data from the different agencies were used. Various literature was also used to ensure that claims are supported with research and scientific inquiry. The planning committee of each sector made sure that the strategies are solidly aligned with the national plan, the long-term vision and the Mindanao plans, but also with President Marcos Jr.'s eight-point socio-economic agenda, the Philippine Development Plan and the 17 sustainable development goals. In addition, the Bangsa-Moro Development Program and the resource matrix, the Bangsa-Moro Development Policy Research Agenda, OBDPRA, serves as a supporting documents of the second BDP with the aim of providing the essential policy reforms to implement the said plan. Inclusive and participatory, the five sectors were meaningfully engaged in problem analysis, target setting and strategy formulation, investment programming and results-based monitoring and evaluation. Provincial and city consultations workshop were conducted to strengthen vertical integration of local priorities in the second BDP. The consultations were participated by provincial, city municipal and barangay governments, civil society organizations, academies and the private sectors and the BARM ministries, offices and agencies or MOAS. In terms of horizontal alignment, the planning committee of each sector also made sure that the second BDP is aligned with the enhanced 12-point priority agenda of the Bangsa-Moro government and that the development trust and priorities in the second BDP are translated into concrete programs, projects in the BDIP. Annual slides of the BDIP, known as the Annual Investment Program, AIP, shall also be prepared and shall be the basis of the ministries, offices and agencies in the preparation of the respective budget proposals to be funded by the General Appropriation Act of the Bangsa-Moro or GAAL. Now, let me proceed with the regional trends and prospect for development. On population and demography, BARM is well positioned for accelerated economic growth and social development as a result of the high percentage of population in the working age group from age 15 to 64 years old in 2020. The population projection from 2010 to 2030 also signify the potential of BARM to reap demographic dividends or realize the potential for economic growth. On the political aspect, there is much anticipation about the passage of the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code, which is critical in paving the way for a more democratic and honest electoral process in the Bangsa-Moro region. In the coming years, BARM will be seeing a stable and stronger governance system with the amount of progress made and the continuing effort to build the bureaucracy. BARM's revenue generation capacity will be boosted by the passage, Insha Allah, of the Bangsa-Moro Tax and Revenue Code. The Bangsa-Moro Local Government Code, BLGC, as outlined in the Parliament Bill Number 30, will provide clear guidance between the Bangsa-Moro government and the local governments. BARM is actively supported in its effort to institutionalization and development by the national government, international organization and development partners. The support of national government partners as well as the international community has become increasingly crucial in BARM's effort towards a peaceful transition. While the Mandana's ruling is generally viewed as an opportunity to bolster decentralization, leading to improved delivery of services, we see this as a significant challenge during the transition because we are still in our infancy as a government. On the economic aspect, we see numerous opportunities to boost the Bangsa-Moro region's economy owing to its abundant natural resources and diverse natural topography, evidenced by vast tracts of fertile land and marine resources. Due to this competitive advantage, the Bangsa-Moro region is viewed as a viable source for producing goods or services at a lower opportunity cost than its trading counterparts. The economic integration of BARM in the Brunei, Indonesia, Malaysia, Philippines East Asian growth areas, so BIMPEYAGA, opens up important opportunities for trade and investment. Our integration in the BIMPEYAGA trade window establishes the Bangsa-Moro government as a strategic player, thereby increasing our economic competitiveness within Mindanao and the BIMPEYAGA region. In the social aspect, poverty reduction in the BARM is the most important history. All of the BARM government's efforts to reduce poverty are started All of the BARM government's efforts to reduce poverty are starting to bear fruit despite the challenges that have been brought about by the region's transition and the COVID nineteen pandemic. The importance of Madaris education cannot be overstated. It is particularly important in the context of the Bangsa Moro. A region located in the country with a non-Muslim majority, Madaris education plays a very important role in preserving the Islamic faith and culture. The passage of the Bangsa Moro Autonomy Act Number Eighteen, otherwise known as the Bangsa Moro Education Code, is both critical for a Bangsa Moro educational system that is relevant and responsive to the needs, ideals and aspiration of the Bangsa Moro people. More importantly, the said code is also seen to strengthen the Madaris system. On technological aspect, harnessing technology will be transformative in reducing inequity and addressing BARM's development challenges. Technology and innovation can go a long way towards eradicating poverty and bringing about sustainable development in BARM. On the economic empowerment of the poor and vulnerable sectors, technology shall be used to aid farmers and fishermen in providing better access to market information and promoting resilient farming. With better access to technology, micro, small and medium enterprise or MSMEs can develop more competitive products and reach their intended markets. In order to harness the potential of technology, BARM must prioritize and increase budgetary support for digital infrastructure, including information, communication and technology or ICT, as well as research and innovation. Further, it is important to provide equal access to technology throughout the BARM, particularly to the geographically isolated and disadvantaged areas. For the next six years, it will be crucial for BARM to set a legislative and policy agenda that will outline the Bangsa Moro government's priorities and shape relevant and responsive policies and programmatic outcomes both in the medium and in the long term. As an important precursor to setting out this agenda, it would be necessary to ensure meaningful participation of all relevant stakeholders, in particular those from marginalized and disadvantaged communities to achieve results that are inclusive and holistic. Research and evidence-based data should be leveraged to set this legislative and policy agenda. Taking into account the context of BARM, which involves the confluence of man-made and natural disasters, an approach encompassing inter-intra-governmental and multi-sectoral integration should be pursued. The Bangsa Moro government should also continue the leverage on the capacities of the civil society organizations to reinforce peace-building initiatives. Engaging the empowering civil society organizations or CSOs is always central to the BARM's government strategy in learning the groundwork for a peaceful transition. Therefore, BARM's climate change, adaptation and disaster risk reduction and management should spouse a whole-of-government and in-whole-of-society approach that underpins effective coordination and convergence of efforts among BARM's ministries and agencies as well as between the national government and the BARM government. The Bangsa Moro's spatial strategies will determine how the BARM will evolve. This chapter in the plan discuss the immense comparative advantages and potentials of the BARM which shape the functional roles of each provinces, its cities and its special geographic areas. Long-term BARM economies that support economic growth and development throughout this area will be based on these roles. This is the administrative map showing the locations of the hundred sixteen municipalities, two hundred, five hundred ninety barangays, now six provinces and three cities. BARM will implement a multimodal spatial approach that will include primary growth centers and secondary growth centers throughout this entire region. The six provinces, the capital cities and the BARM's special geographic area shall serve as development nodes and growth centers are the areas from which development will primarily originate and spread throughout the region. The proposed functional roles were determined by assessing each province's comparative advantages and potentials. These functional roles, once developed, shall grow into new economies collaboratively. These functional roles shall contribute to boosting the economy of the whole region. The assessment of the functional roles was anchored on the three key spatial strategy principles: agglomeration, connectivity and vulnerability reduction. Agglomeration in BARM is mainly demonstrated by the hierarchy of settlements. BARM's method of arranging settlements into a hierarchy is based on the population size and the presence of key services, commodities and facilities. In essence, the larger the population of a settlement, the larger the scale of activities. Therefore, the greater opportunities for division of labor and specialization. The urban centers in BARM have been classified as regional centers, subregional centers, provincial centers and local centers. Connectivity in the context of spatial strategy principles aims to connect the settlement areas, economic zones, markets, production areas and other areas of agglomeration through affordable, safe, reliable and efficient transportation, information and communication technology and energy. The region has six major airports where only three are operational as shown in the map. As of twenty twenty one, the total national road network of BARMs is one thousand thirty-eight point thirty-five kilometers. It is the consolidated length of national road in mainland and island provinces. Of the total road network, only ten point zero nine kilometers is left on pave. Moreover, the twenty twenty one BARM total road network represents only three percent of country's total national road network wherein forty-three point sixty-one kilometers were spout. Nine hundred eighty-four point sixty-six kilometers were concrete and lastly ten point zero nine kilometers were gravelled or earth. In addition, the consolidated length of the local road network is ten thousand nine hundred twelve point fifty-eight kilometers. It consists of provincial municipal routes. This data was collected from all LGUs of BARM municipal geographic area. BARM has existing major ports. Two of these ports are subject for rehabilitation and one port is proposed for construction as reflected in the map. In twenty twenty one, the region recorded a total of two thousand seven hundred forty domestic ship calls, which is only thirty-seven percent of each pre-pandemic level of seven thousand three hundred sixty-six domestic ship calls. The Holo, Lamitan and Bungao ports are the top three ports in terms of domestic ship calls. Vulnerability reduction is the spatial strategy principle that covers security and protection of the agglomeration and connectivity infrastructure from threats of man-made and natural disasters. It considers the climate change projections and threats of hydro, meteoric, geal and geologic hazard and other events including public health emergencies in increasing initiatives on disaster risk reduction and climate change adaptation. On BARM's geological hazard, there are two trenches that engulf the region causing the occurrence of earthquakes and tsunamis. Epicenters are located around the faults and trenches. The Sulu Trench is on the west side of the island provinces of the region and the Cotabato Trench is located in the southwest, southwestern coast of the mainland area of the region. Recently, due to the vast forest cover loss, rain-induced landslides and soil erosion were experienced in the province of Magindanao, Lano del Sur, Basilan and Sulu. Moreover, frequent flooding incidents in low-lying areas, especially in Cotabato City and the provinces of Magindanao and Lano del Sur are caused by continuous rainfall with BARM and northern Mindanao resulting a high number of population affected. Now, allow me to present to you the proposed second BDP twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight overall development framework. This will serve as our development roadmap for the next six years. At the outset, the formulation of the second BDP is aligned and consistent with the enhanced twelve-point priority agenda of our chief minister. Here is the proposed Bangsa Moro development framework for the second BDP twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight. The vision and mission remains the same with the first BDP. Our proposed overall goal is to have unempowered, cohesive and progressive Bangsa Moro. Under it, we have six proposed development goals covering the five sectors of governance: infrastructure, social, economic and peace, public, order and safety. The sixth development goal is dedicated for culture and identity. Under the six development goals are the proposed eight development strategies that will serve as our roadmap in achieving the sectoral development goals and the overall goal. Around the Bangsa Moro development framework of BDF are the twelve pillars of moral governance. Serves as the guiding principle or overarching strategy and direction for all development initiatives in the BARM. Based on the macroeconomic performance under the first BDP, the following have been set as targets for the next six years. Number one, maintain an annual average growth of eight to nine for the percent for the period, for the period. Second, GRDP per capita will have an annual average growth of fifteen to twenty percent within the next six years. Services and industry sectors register as sustained double-digit real growth ranging from ten to twelve percent. Fourth, an upward trend in capital formation in the next six years as BARM registers greater stability and predictability in terms of investment climates. By the end of twenty twenty eight, gross capital formation should account for fifteen to eighteen percent of GRDE or GRDP. Fifth, inflation rate maintained at two to four percent. Sixth, underemployment rate three to five percent. Unemployment rate, three to five percent, underemployment rate from four to seven percent and seven poverty incidence, twenty to twenty-five with poverty gap and severity on a downward trend. Next slide. There was a deliberate effort to ensure that the second BDP was vertically aligned to the eight-point priority agenda of the Marcos administration, the Philippine Development Plan twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight and the global sustainable development goals. Let's proceed now with the sectoral chapters of the second BDP. Each sectoral chapters include the sectoral and subsectoral assessment, strategic framework, priority strategies and programs and priority policy and research agenda. This time, allow me to highlight the second BDP's sectoral trends priorities. Next slide, chapter five is improving and strengthening governance mechanism for a stable, just and accountable Bangsa Moro government. The sectoral objectives of having an effective and efficient bureaucracy, a well-developed planning and planning process and system, responsive and efficient legislative services, improve public expenditure and revenue generation, inclusive and transparent governance, and six, a people-centered Bangsa Moro justice system shall contribute to a stable, just and accountable Bangsa Moro government. We have defined corresponding strategies for us to achieve the six sectoral objectives. These strategies were determined by the development administration sector as being essential to achieve the objectives. Major programs have been identified for bureaucracy, fiscal management, development planning and Bangsa Moro justice system management. The following legislative or policy agenda is considered as a critical element to deliver the reforms needed to carry out the strategies under the development administration sector. Chapter six, while chapter six is mainstreaming Bangsa Moro cultural diversity, beliefs, heritage and identity. Next slide. The highlighted portion is the framework for chapter six with sectoral goal of rich and diverse Bangsa Moro cultures and identity preserved and recognized. The strategies outlined here are those that fall under the social sector's umbrella of strategies for achieving the goal. These are, next slide, these are the major programs and priority legislative agenda for the sectoral, social sector. Chapter seven covers the creation of a favorable enabling environment for an inclusive, resilient and sustainable economic development. Chapter seven aims to have an equitable, competitive and robust economy with the following sectoral objectives: improving the agri-fisheries productivity and tenureial security, ensure food security and resilient economy in the Bangsa Moro, increase and sustain trade, industry and tourism in the BARM, improve access to decent employment and increase functional cooperatives and social enterprise in the region. Again, we have defined corresponding strategies for us to achieve the economic sectoral covities. So these are the strategies presented as shown in the slide. Next slide. Major programs have been identified specifically on agri-fishery, employment trade and social services. We have also identified the priority policy agenda for this sector. Next slide. So these are the following policy legislative agenda identified for this sector. So I'll not go into details po, nasa may kape naman po, nung presentation. Next slide. Chapter eight is harnessing technology and innovation to increase socioeconomic opportunities and improve government services. Chapter eight aims to contribute to the goal of an equitable, competitive and robust economy by harnessing technology and innovations to increase socioeconomic opportunities and improve government services, the by contributing to the attainment of an improved and increased technology, commercialization and utilization of BARM in BARM. We have identified the following strategies in realizing an equitable, competitive and robust economy. So this is the strategies that we were able to identify with the help of the ministries and officers during the workshops. Next slide. To meet our objectives, we have also articulated these major programs and priority legislative agenda. Again, this is also the product of our series of activities with our partners and the ministries, offices and agencies. Next slide. The next chapter under social development sector is chapter nine to ensure inclusive and equitable access to quality services for social justice and human capital development. The highlighted portion is the framework for chapter nine with sectoral goal of inclusive, responsive and quality social services. This will realize through this overall strategy of ensuring inclusive and equitable access to quality services for so social justice and human capital development. To achieve our social development goals, we have identified strategies which are to improve access to quality, responsive and relevant education for all, ensure access and utilization of quality health, nutrition and sanitation service and reduce the number of poor and vulnerable in the population. Next slide. We have identified major programs in education, social welfare and health, nutrition and WAS. Here is the priority legislative agenda again for this sector. So we have identified eleven So we have identified eleven priority agenda legislative agenda for this sector. Next slide. Chapter ten is on enhancing and strengthening peace, public order and safety and security, and upholding human rights and inclusive, peaceful, progressive, and sustainable development. The goal of peace, public order, safety, and security sector is to have a peaceful, safe, and resilient Bangsa-Moro communities by enhancing and strengthening peace, public order, safety, and upholding human rights for inclusive, peaceful, progressive, and sustainable development. After six years, the sector aims to have reduced the security threat, improve public order and safety, sustain the gains of the peace process, and mitigate human rights cases through the realization of subsectoral objectives. We list here the following strategies to achieve this. Number one, reduce the presence of groups that threaten security, improve public safety. And three, sustain the gains of the peace process and mitigate human rights cases. But I'm mean to them. Been identified or defined. We have also arrived at the priority policies for the sector under chapter ten. Chapter eleven in the second BDP is scaling up strategic climate, scaling up strategic climate resilient and quality infrastructure to support sustainable socio-economic development in the Bangsa-Moro. This is the proposed strategic framework for chapter eleven where the goal is to attain a strategic adequate and climate resilient infrastructure in the Bangsa-Moro region. This framework will support the Chief Minister Enhanced Twelve Priority Agenda. Its overall strategy is to scale up, scale up strategic climate resilient and quality infrastructure to support sustainable socio-economic development in the Bangsa-Moro. To have strategic adequate and climate resilient infrastructure, we have identified strategies, namely, to establish a reliable, safe, and efficient national station system, ensure access to portable water and irrigation system, and reduce vulnerability to disasters. Improve energy security, ensure access to broader, affordable, and reliable digital connectivity, and ensure access to affordable, resilient, and responsive socio-economic infrastructure. While here are the major programs being proposed under this sector. It's shown in the slide. Thank you. Next slide. And here are the legislative priority priorities identified specifically on transportation, water resource infrastructure, and energy. On transportation, we have seven, water resource, six, and energy, we have six proposed legislative priorities. And on ICT, we have three, and social infrastructure, we have fifteen. Next slide. Chapter twelve is about improving ecological integrity and resilience of communities and ensuring healthy and clean environment. Given the rich natural resources of BARM that are relatively underdeveloped, but brings the potential for financial and economic viability. It is crucial that these resources be properly managed to address economic stability, social conflict, and irreversible damage to the environment. Hence, the fostering a comprehensive framework for sustainable development in BARM entails proper conservation, utilization, and development of the region's natural endowment. With this, the Bangsa-Moro government shall provide enabling sound environment policies and programs for a safe, decent, healthy, and productive environment for the present and future generations of the Bangsa-Moro. To achieve this, it will be necessary to employ multi-sectoral and participatory approach involving all stakeholders in order to safeguard and improve the ecological integrity and resilience of the Bangsa-Moro communities. This is primarily concern of chapter twelve. So as shown in the slide is the development framework for chapter twelve. Next slide please. And these are the strategies formulated under the said chapter. From effectiveness of management of the Bangsa-Moro natural resources to the clean and healthy environment guaranteed and information on risk assessment and geo-hazard enhancement. Next slide. And while this is the strategy formulated again, proposed under the disaster resilient and climate change adaptive Bangsa-Moro communities toward sustainable development. Next slide. While these are the major programs also identified under the, uh, this chapter, chapter twelve. Now, we have, uh, four, five, under the effective management of the Bangsa-Moro natural resource ensured. Under the clean and healthy environment guaranteed, we have three. Under disaster, we have one. And under the informational risk assessment, we have three. Next slide. And these are the priority legislative agendas also identified under the said chapter, passage of BARM Environment Code, Responsible Mining Code, Climate Change Policy Office for the BARM, and the passage of low sustainable utilizing of BARM inland waters. Next slide. That's end my presentation again. Um, good afternoon to everyone. Magandang Apon po. Salamualaikum. Warakmatulaytala. Wabarakaat.
Thank you very much, uh, Bangsa-Moro Director General Muhyajrin Ali. The floor is now open for questions, and we have, uh, members of the parliament who wish to post questions. Um, may I invite back Director General Ali to the podium? So ang una po na nagpalis- uh, una sa listahan, may we request MP Amino Din to take the floor for questions.
May we request Director Ali to take one of the podiums.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Salamualaikum. Barakat.
My question is, uh, I cut you for a while. Please limit your questions with respect to the
Just to question.
Presentation of, uh, the Director General.
Yeah, of course. May I recognize Mr. Speaker? Okay, thank you.
You may proceed.
Anong, uh, highlights ng dalawang nasikang DPP na wala sa unang DPP? Kahit 'yung pinaka-importante lang na pagkakaiba ng dalawa. Number two, ano po ang mga challenges na na-encounter niyo sa unang DPP na na-resolve niyo sa pangalawang DPP? Yan lang po. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, for the question, no? The first question is about the special highlights, no, of, uh, the second BDP. Actually, we have a number of, uh, special highlights, uh, compared to the previous, uh, development plan that we have. Um, unang-una po dito 'yung, uh, about the cross-cutting themes of inclusion, equity, and justice to be operationalized through the strategies and targets in the second BDP, no? So meaning, um, 'yung strategy has to be very, very, uh, uh, isa sa mga pinaka-importanteng, uh, aspekto nung plano where all the ministries and offices has to align their programs and projects to be able to achieve the desired goal, no? From the sectoral to the overall goal of the development plan po. So isa po yun sa, isa sa mga, um, uh, special highlights. Pangalawa po, 'yung emphasis po natin sa delineation of accountability is through the formulation of sectoral and subsectoral objectives, no? Um, utilizing the sectoral, um, institution or sectoral platform po ng BSC, dito ho napapag-usapan uh, madalas kung ano 'yung mga issues to be able to make sure na 'yung, uh, um, goals natin, uh, under the development plan ay ma-achieve po natin, no? So nagiging, uh, claro po 'yung bagay na yon related, um, um, sa bagay na ito. Pangatlo, um, 'yung development plan po natin sa ngayon, uh, ay fourteen chapters na po kumpara sa thirteen before, wherein 'yung pang-fourteen chapters natin ay related po sa communication strategy. Alam po natin na nagi-struggle po tayo in, uh, um, popularizing the, uh, development plan ng BARM from the region down to, to the grassroots. So we made sure this time, uh, for the, for the duration of the plan, a six-year plan, ma-ip- advocate na po natin yan, uh, even to the grassroots. So ilan po ito doon, no, sa ilang, um, special highlights nung, uh, ano natin, nung, uh, uh, second BDP natin na kumpara po doon sa, uh, unang, uh, BDP na na nagawa natin. And with the new B, with the second BDP, um, is iniscale up na po natin 'yung, uh, objective natin from the, uh, previous objective of, uh, upliftment of lives, no, ng Bangsa-Moro and establishing the bureaucracy. We deem it, uh, see na during our workshops and activities na substantially we were able to do something about the upliftment. This time, we are leading towards to a, uh, empowered and more progressive Bangsa-Moro po, uh, for our constituency. So, um, yun lang 'yung nanghahailan po, nung ang dami po bata tulad po 'yung sinabi mo, uh, magbibigay ng, uh, iilan among the special features po nung, uh, second BDP natin. Thank you. And on the second question related sa lessons learned, tama po ba, uh, Mr. Chair? Uh, challenges, is that, is that the second?
Yeah, you, you may proceed with your response to the question.
Yeah, um, one of the challenges that, uh, we were able to identify, no? Um, 'yung, uh, related po is structural transformation, no? Um, with, with, uh, um, indicators given to us by the Philippine Statistics Authority, uh, informing us, no, na this time, um, uh, na-transform na po 'yung, uh, um, economy ng, ng, ng BARM, no? Previously, we, we basically rely on agriculture, fisheries, and forestry AFF, but this time, um, based on the results given to us by the PSA, uh, we have a more balanced economy na po, no? Um, um, tumaas na po 'yung aspect of services and even the industry, no? Pero hindi ho nangangulugan na 'yung, uh, uh, AFF natin ay, uh, uh, bumangheba, no? Tumaas din po, pero mas mataas lang po talaga 'yung, uh, hatak nung, uh, services natin at industry na, na pumasok sa, sa BARM sa ngayon. So yun, na, in regards to the, uh, said, uh, structural, uh, uh, transformation, no? And in line with this po, uh, nagmanifest naman po ito, no, um, nung twenty-twenty-one wherein a- after the, uh, the, uh, effect or the pandemic on twenty-twenty, um, we were able to garner second fastest within the country, no, among regions. So mapapansin po natin doon na, um, having a very strong, um, AFF sector, no, within the BARM somehow helped, no? 'Yung resilience po nung bagay na yan on the economy ay nakatulong po sa atin, uh, even during the time of pandemic na among regions, uh, tayo din po 'yung pinakamababa po na naaffect to one, no? At the rate of negative one point nine in the rest of the country po, mas mababa pa doon. So these are, no, ito 'yung iilan doon sa mga, um, uh, challenges na we are able to hopefully, no, masustain natin and ma-cater natin this time. Uh, 'yung sustainability dito naman po 'yung magiging, uh, focus natin for the next six years po. Thank you.
Floor leader.
Next in the list is MP Mitmog.
The, the gentleman from Lano del Sur is recognized.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I submitted five questions. Uh, I will ask the first question. Uh, Mr. Speaker, dito po sa Bangsa-Moro Development Plan natin, uh, ideally dapat may tatlong accompanying develop, uh, document, 'yung Bangsa-Moro Development Investment Program, Result Matrixes, Bangsa-Moro Development Policy, and Research Agenda. Ang pinaka-importante po is 'yung Bangsa-Moro Development Investment Program. Kasi ito sana 'yung magtranslate ng programs, projects, financing options natin in relation sa BDP. Ang question ko lang po, since hindi po siya attach, um, ready po ba tayo with this, uh, with these documents, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, uh, the gentleman may respond.
Yeah, yeah, uh, thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, upon, uh, upon completion of the plan po, no, and, uh, we were able to present it to the Cabinet and the BSC uh, last year, no, we also deemed, uh, started the formulation of the said documents, no? In fact, um, yesterday, uh, continuing po, and we were able to initially consolidate all the plans and programs po nung, uh, uh, ministries, offices, and, uh, and, uh, agencies, no? Uh, medyo makapal po siya, no? And, uh, ito ho 'yung, uh, susunod po ng mga dokumento among the three. And simultaneous with that, 'yung RM, um, pina-finalize na rin po namin, uh, um, in support po nung, uh, development plan. In fact, um, 'yung finalization would be a very tasking dahil, um, it involves the ministries and offices, uh, proposals, no, for the next, uh, six years. Dahil tulad po nung nabanggit ni MP Mitmog, Dahil tulad po nung nabanggit ni MP Mitmog, it will give us the glance of how much do we need ah in terms of figure ah to achieve the the second B D P for the next six years. So, initially meron na ho tayong indicative amount based on the consolidated ah document. But ah the finalization of this, and I asked my ah technical staff, ah we will be ah in a very conservative ah estimate. We will be ah finishing this um within 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 the quarter of 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 this year, no? To to make sure na 'yung ah nilagay po lahat ng mga ministries and offices natin ah would be the the programs and projects they intended to to implement for the next ah six years, including the resource matrix, kasi hindi ho magkahiwalay 'yung R M and the B D I P. And simultaneous with that, we have also started formulating the ah B D R B D P R A, the Policy Research Agenda. Wala ho ito nung first B D P, and this time we deem it necessary na meron. And ah we are already at the fifty percent po nung formulation po nung policy agenda. And hopefully, we could also deliver the document within the first quarter of ah of ah this year. 'Yung ah development plan namam po natin, no, ah which is said basically ah ah standalone document, no, with the supporting documents. Ah the way we see it, no, ah could also be ah approved by the parliament. Um and this document is also as what was mentioned by the Chief Minister, a requirement po natin ah to avail dung ah special development plan for natin for the succeeding year. So, yun 'yung mga instances na why we from the B P D A we ah see it necessarily to ah push for for the approval, because if we were able to approve the development plan and the attached documents will also be ah finished within the first quarter, then ah the national government, upon giving them a copy, could already process the succeeding as there for us again for the next six years po ah for that. So, yun po ang ah ah um ah sagot po namin doon sa katanungan po ni MP Mitmog. Salamat po.
Ah okay, ah Mr. Speaker, salamat po. Naintindihan po natin ah hopefully, within the first quarter, susunod 'yung B D I P, ah result matrices, pati Bangsa Moro Development Policy Research Agenda. So at least at at the moment, ah meron tayo itong ah B D P natin, pero wala pa po 'yung tatlong document. Ang second ko pong katanungan ah ah, Mr. Speaker, is in relation sa legislation. Ah meron ditong references in relation sa legislation, B T A Parliament. Ang ang question ko po is, would there be an opportunity, meron bang pagkakataon na pwede pang ma-check ng B T A? Dahil karamihan naman dito ay galing din sa first B T A. Ah meron ba silang opportunity to at least reward 'yung certain provisions, ah certain notes dito? Kasi sa tingin ko, medyo hindi siya na-capture ng mabuti.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, def- definitely po. Ah that's why ah the essence of ah presenting the document or the development plan to the parliament is to ah get further inputs, to make them ah enhance it and make sure na na-capture po natin lahat, no, ah even at the level of the parliament.
Ma- maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Ah, Mr. Speaker, 'yung pangatlong katanungan po is 'yung multi-stakeholders engagement. Ah maganda po, pero na-mentioned dito, at least ah very solid 'yung pulisiya ng ating gobyerno. Pero napapansin ko po ah, Mr. Speaker, is ah ang pinaka-core kasi dito is 'yung access, 'yung ah data, pati information. Minsan nahihirapan din 'yung taong bayan natin. Ah naintindihan ko, meron tayong twelve N G O's, C S O's na member nung deliberation sa sektoral. Pero ang ang bang po, ang madaming tao po, nakikita lang nila 'yung programa, 'yung pla- no, 'yung project either sa website o kaya naka-post sa bulletin board. Ah meron buong meron po bang kaakibat dahil wala pa 'yung B D I B B D I P? Meron po bang kaakibat ito ah maasahan natin, parang executive order na mandatory para sa lahat ng ministries, pati offices, na dapat po may project program i-identify nila kung sino 'yung beneficiary at paano ma-access ng ordinaryong tao 'yung kanilang services sa Bangsa Moro Government po?
Yeah, um yeah, on the on the access, no, um basically, ang ah isa sa, in terms of how we be able to um provide, no, access to information, no, from 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 our constituency, no? May 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 layer po 'yan, no? Ah unang-una, um 'yung ah sectoral platform po ng B C is also a way of um providing the data, no, at 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 the government level and and on our part, no, and this has also one of our also recommendation, and we also started it even at the B P D A level ah for the B D P ah consumption, ah 'yung establishment po nung database and online dashboard, no? Ah we have already start establish a dashboard, and it would be a matter of operationalizing it later and then put everything in the dashboard in relation to the to the B D P and then ah ah let it ah be ah accessed online, no? So, on the part of the B P D A, nandun ho 'yung direction namin to make sure na 'yung access po nung constituency natin ay ah mabilis at ah madali ho nilang makuha 'yung information related po doon sa development plan. And then later, it would migrate doon sa programs and projects na po in line with the B D I P. So, in on the on the side of the B P D A, we are already on the track of ah making sure na 'yung ah multi-stakeholder approach is being religiously ah ah push, no, ah on on our part. And hopefully, within this year, that dashboard, which ah U N D P supported, no, for us will also be operationalized na rin and upon the ah ah approval of the development plan and the B D I P and then ah the ah programs and projects of the ministries, then ah it would also help us ah in M and E, no, tracking ah with regards to the um updates and ah the status of every programs and projects ah related to the ah ministries and in offices. So yun po, no, but as to the ah E O, no, ah hopefully, we could ah have the executive order, making it mandatory, no, ah for the, no? Yes, yes. So, one one of the ah proposal that we presented a while ago is on the policy of the government for open ah data, ah open governance, no, 'yung e-governance po. Thank you.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at natutuwa tayo na open governance po 'yung ah direction ng ating gobyerno. Ah sa huling katanungan ko po, Mr. Speaker, nakita ko kasi dito may communication strategy for the second Bangsa Moro Parliament. Ah napansin ko meron ditong B T A Parliament Speaker and Members of the Parliament, ah education about the B D P. Ah ang ang katanungan ko po i- ah ah eto ba 'yung mangyayari after natin mapass 'yung resolution ng B D P or ah will we be having more 'yung mga maliliit na forum with the committees? O kaya ah focus group discussion sa 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 B T A Parliament para mas maintindihan natin ang mabuti 'yung B D P para buong buong pu- ah buong buo ang puso natin sa pagpass natin ng Bangsa Moro Development Plan?
Yeah, ah basically, it would be after the the approval, then we will trigger the ano, the advocacy and the ano ah popularization of the said development plan from the region, including the parliament down to the grassroots po. Thank you.
Um, maraming salamat po, ah Mr. Speaker, at least nalilawan 'yung ilang mga katanungan natin. Salamat po.
Okay, thank you very much, MP Mitmog. Next in the list is Deputy Speaker Lysa Alamiya.
Salamalay ko, marahmatulay ang barakat ho. My courtesy is to the Chief Minister. Ah thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and the Floor Leader, for giving me this opportunity to ask some questions. Um, to my classmate at the M N S A and my groupmate at the military training. Ah I survived the swimming portion because of him, ah Mr. Speaker. So, my questions are, um I have three groups of questions based on ah the regional economy, which is really what I would like to focus on ah on the bureaucracy and on the revenue generation. Um, I'd I'd I would like to give my appreciation on the way that the Bangsa Moro Development Plan was ah crafted now for two thousand ah twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight, especially on the development goals and the strategies and how you have connected that to the twelve-point agenda. Um, for example, on the regional economy. So I'd like to focus on that. So, um if you look at the presentation earlier, the G R D P vis a vis poverty reduction, Mr. Speaker, the target annual G R D P growth rate is ah eight percent to nine percent for six years. Um and and that's that's very good, no? Kasi ang tapang-tapang natin na mag-target ng hanggang dito lang talaga, eight percent to nine percent lang ah eight, a-abo tayo ng eight percent to nine percent sa G R D P growth. And then ang inflation rate natin ay mababa lang, two to four percent, diba? However, if you look at the poverty incidence target, it's only twenty to twenty-five percent for six years, or about four point nine to nine point nine percent less than the baseline. So I'm not really sure um if ah this is the result of the technical persons who were drafting this, no? Wh- why is the commitment to poverty reduction conservative? Kasi very aggressive tayo doon sa inflation rate, ah so G R D P ah per capita, and then sa annual real growth rate, no, at the total of eight to nine, eight percent to nine percent for the next six years. But when it comes to the poverty incidence rate or poverty reduction, we're very conservative given that we are aggressive in the ah economic growth. And in connection to that, may we ask if you have specific figures as the end of plan targets for poverty gap and poverty severity? So, it's it's looking at whether a a low inflation rate and a high target for G R D P would actually affect the poverty incidence at mas bababa? Hindi ba kayang mas ma- mataas pa 'yung ibababa ng kahirapan sa B A R M? Considering our resources and the very aggressive ah economic outlook? That that's the that's the first question, Mr. Speaker.
Masyado mahirap, ekonomista. But but ma'am, I'll 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 try to explain, know, how we were able to ah arrive at the at the proposed um ah indicators, no? Ah and and during the workshops that we did ah with the ministries, with with our consultant, no, economist, ah si ah Mr. Ever Abasolo. Um if you try to go back, no, ah before, um high G R D P doesn't necessarily reflect reducing the poverty, and this happens in R M before. So that's why we are very conservative po doon sa poverty. Dahil kahit na gaano ho kataas 'yung G R D P mo, it doesn't necessarily mean it ibababa niya na automatically 'yung 'yung ano, 'yung ah poverty. In fact, even during the R M, pumalo din po ng seven point something. But still, the 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 poverty was also very, very high ah during that time. So isa ho sa kinuconsider ho natin, kinuconsider ho namin na pag ah pinjeck mo 'yan hindi nangangulugan automatically na magreflect. But, um in terms of the aggressive, no, ah indicator na binigay namin from eight to nine, no? Nakita ho namin sa twenty-twenty-one, no? When you when you compare it to twenty-twenty, na ah pandemic time na the least affected among regions, kaya namang palang magrebound ng from negative one, magiging seven point five. So, with that, there is also a possibility na sa tingin namin from ah from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight, 'yung 'yung G R D P natin na i-a-achieve natin from eight to ten ay ah manageable, no? Um sa 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 tingin namin. So, um ito 'yung mga bagay na magiging challenge na po ni B A R M for the next six years dahil 'yung sustainability part naman po, no? And ah sa tingin din namin, this also reflects 'yung ah ability of the the B A R M in terms of exercising fiscal autonomy and how we ah deliver, no, direct interventions and ah rely very ah hmm, 'yung reliant natin sa national was masyadong ah ah ma- mababa, no? So, um with that, kaya namin na 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 project na 'yung ah um hmm poverty incidents in the next three years, kasi kinukuha po 'yung poverty incidents every three years, while the G R D P is being ah ah given to us by the P S A annually, no? So, with with the next three years, we are we are very confident po na 'yung twenty to twenty-five, hopefully by that time, mawawala na po tayo sa poorest region among the country ah na na ma-achieve natin provided po na 'yung peace and order, environment, security would maintain. Kasi that would definitely affect ah 'yung ah situation natin for the next um a couple of years. And then, with that environment and the we with the momentum that we are now having in terms of government expenditure, ah influx of investment, no? Ah then ah we're very confident that we could achieve that. But again, yun 'yung isa sa mga, kung in terms of ah, kung bakit um ito mas ganito, conservative, twenty-twenty-five, and then ito masyadong ah very aggressive is because of that ah assessment that we did previous years ah with the massive ah support of the national government during that time, kaya nagkaroon tayo ng seven point something doesn't ah automatically reflect na ibababa niya ang ah ang poverty incidents po.
Ah thank you, Mr. Speaker and the Director General of the B P D A. The reason I ask that question, actually, is I've checked the policy, the policies that the B T A, the Parliament may pass and the programs that the ministries may implement to target poverty para ah mas mababa na 'yung percentage ng mga ah tao na nasa level ng poverty. So I just hope that those will be passed and will be implemented. Now, if if you look at ah in ah inflation rate, you were saying in the presentation, it's also in the B D P um that it's at two percent to four percent. And in view of the eight percent to nine percent G R D P growth targets, how will this be managed? Um, I'm asking that question because I would like to know, considering if you look also, it's also part of the assessment in the B D P na mababa 'yung absorptive capacity ng B A R M, no, the ministries, the agencies in the B A R M, mababa 'yung absorptive capacity, even the local government units. So how do we manage on a fiscal policy level? 'Yung target natin na at two to four percent na inflation and G R D P growth target at eight percent to nine percent? What what are the strategies? How will we manage inflationary pressures? Especially on the poor, considering nasa buong Pilipinas nga, eh mataas 'yung inflation, no? But pero tayo, we're trying to
Yeah, yeah, we are, we are.
We're trying to manage this. Um, how will how will we manage this? If we are going to pass any fiscal policy, bill, ah or resolution in in the Parliament?
Yeah, ma'am, ah if you try to look at 'yung presentation kanina, ah kaya sinabi ko na 'yung ah ah A F F, no, sector, patlo kasi 'yan ma'am eh, A F F, 'yung agriculture, services, and ah industry. Um, one of the things na kaya sa tingin namin, when we did the assessment na naging resilient si B A R M, no, even during pandemic time, is 'yung potentials po ni B A R M on agriculture. Kasi pag ah ang lugar ay basically will rely on industry and services, tulad nung COVID, automatically shutdown talagang i-ihatake niya pababa, no, 'yung ah Even 'yung inflation uh talagang maapektuhan. So with 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 that environment that we have, we were able to somehow manage. Tayo 'yung pinakamababa and even ngayon, no? Uh sa inflation among regions in the country, nasa six point something tayo, tayo pa rin 'yung pinakamababa um nationwide. So in terms of legislation, ma'am, no, sa tingin namin, isa sa mga bagay na. Uh kailangan hunating ma-push, no, in terms of uh the uh issue or problem on inflation. 'Yung potential po natin to produce local products, especially on food security. Kasi sa ngayon po ma, na-hijack na po even national. In terms of providing the supply internally, eh dyan din po 'yung naging problema natin, even during the time of pandemic. Um, 'yung inflation naman po, basically would, the way we understand it, highly dependent po 'yan sa demand and supply, no? Pag may supply ka, ibig sabihin, manage 'yung presyo. Pag wala kang supply, talagang tataas po 'yung presyo, tulad po ng bigas, asukal, even crude oil, ngayon po si buyas na. So pag uh 'yung uh programa po natin, even sa MAFR, in trying to make sure. Na 'yung uh program po ng MAFR on food security would somehow be boosted, no, and the potential of our BARM. To trigger already the revenue potential of getting uh. Uh revenue from from various GOCs' investment, then we will be able to uh uh manage the inflation. The partnership with the private sector, ma'am, has also to be balanced. Kasi the way we we look at it, and even at the national, pag hindi ho masyadong malakas 'yung participation ng government. In giving to the private sector any goods, na-hijack din po nila 'yung goods na yun, at uh pumapasok na po doon 'yung mga issues of hoarding. So ito po 'yung mga bagay, no, hopefully, in terms of legislation, na meron naman po kaming proposal by chapter. Uh basically, kung ma-manage hunatin, na we will be providing uh. Internally within the BARM, 'yung 'yung local industry natin, ma-promote hunatin ng maayos at. Maging uh base po natin 'yan, then we believe the 'yung uh inflation uh will be managed. Even in Marawi City po ma, in Lano del Sur, um isa po sa mga bagay na naging dahilan. Bakit po from a very high poverty naging seven? No, uh during uh the uh twenty-twenty-one uh poverty incidents na pinalabas. Isa rin po 'yung inflation within the land, within Lano del Sur, dahil meron po silang surplus of supplies. Everywhere, from from the development partners to the proj- produ- produce ng local, sa tulong ni BARM, special programs. Within that span of three years, isa po 'yung sin- ang sinabi sa amin ng PSA na nagpa-manage ng inflation nila at. Nagpataas ng ability of the every individual. Based on the poverty threshold na meron sila sa Lano del Sur, marami na pong tao doon na mas. Kaya na nilang maghanap-buhay above the threshold na on poverty. So. That's how important po 'yung inflation na meron po tayo uh within the BARM and even within the country. Sa ngayon, nagfe-feel natin. Kung ano ang meron sa Pilipinas, damay po tayo in terms of supply, kahit na meron tayo, tumataas 'yung presyo. Pag hindi hunatin ma-manage 'yan and we would be able to do nothing about legislating a law related to this, then uh. Talaga humapektuhan po tayo in terms of inflation po.
Okay. Thank you, uh Mister Speaker. I trust that the Development Investment Program. Uh Regional Development Investment Program would have a listing. Uh of the programs and projects and activities na magta-target dito and make sure. Na talagang masustain natin 'yung GRDP na ganyan kataas at mapababa 'yung poverty incidence rate. Now, on the second portion of my question, is it's on the bureaucracy. Um, and it is reassuring to see that institution building remains high. In the framework of the the Bangsa Mora Governance Agenda. Because we're targeting to build a stable, just, and accountable government. But as I've mentioned earlier. Um, the BDP identified, no, you, it's the BDP, nasa BDP, sinasabi na may. Problema tayo sa absorptive capacity and poor fiscal management. So, for example, um, well, there is much room for improvement, actually. On the chapter, on on this, uh 'yung public financial management, you have sixty-seven point ninety-one percent. Of continuing appropriations from fiscal year twenty-twenty, uh which have been obligated. By the end of December uh twenty-twenty-two. It's also the same story for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Only seventy-one point ninety-six percent has been obligated. Now, may I know, although I've read through the the BDP, if there are any new, bagong measures? Meron bang bagong measures that have been put in place in the BDP to address poor absorptive capacity? Kasi tatlong taon na tayo, yun 'yung problema natin palagi, mababa 'yung budget utilization rate. And then, etong strategies na to, have this been reviewed, kung effective ba? Aside from nagme-memo si MFBM, uh minister, or pinapagalitan 'yung ano. Mga ministries, mag- ano na kayo, liquidate, tapusin niyo na para tumaaas 'yung ating absorptive capacity. Are there strategies na bago na nandito sa ating BDP to address that? Um, yes. And if there are, if there are strategies, how can the Parliament help? Ano 'yung pwedeng gawin ng BTA to address etong. Low absorptive capacity and poor fiscal management?
Uh, yeah, 'yung specific strategy, ma'am, no? Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm asking my my technical staff as to the uh. Provision, no? Yeah, um, yeah, 'yung uh. Yeah, doon sa ano, doon sa strategies na na delay daw namin, one of the focus there, 'yung establishment of the mechanisms. In uh dealing with the with the absorptive capacity. And in fact, um, we have a very good. Three years at least, huh, in trying to find ways on how to improve, no? Tama po talaga kayo, ma'am, no? Uh even even at the planning, uh um uh premise. Yun din po 'yung naging challenge namin for the past how many years na. Pag hindi hun naappoint ng uh ministry, 'yung permanent planning officers. Kasi ang nangyayari po niyan, even at the sectoral or bed CEO, any meetings, pabago-bago 'yung tao. Na pinapadala. So nagkakaroon kami ng problema. And then 'yung reporting from him to their uh bosses, no? So, we were able to identify some strategies, no? Uh. Sa ano, sa in dealing with the ano, the uh absorptive capacity.
Automation and um responsive utilization of funds to MFBL.
Yeah, um, nakafocus po 'yung strategy namin sa uh as a lead. Institution, 'yung uh Ministry of Finance, uh Budget and and Management. Kasi. Sila naman po talaga 'yung in charge with regards to this, no? One of the things that we were able to identify, even through the, you know, through the workshops and uh. Activities and meetings, no, internal and with the ministries, ay 'yung uh. 'Yung capability of every ministries and offices, so technically, no, even understanding the preparation of beds. And other supporting documents. I'm very happy recently dahil uh uh through the leadership of MFBM, no? Uh, bago 'yung deadline, ini po niya lahat, nasabi niya, sinigurado niya. Na gawa na ba 'yung mga beds niyo. Kasi ang nagiging problema po namin last year, and even MFBM. Pag nagta-target ka lang ng deadline, marami hong nakaka-miss ng deadline, even umaabot ng ilang buwan. Just for the preparation of beds. So this time, we make sure na. Maayos na nila para lahat silang mainganyo na talagang. And then 'yung 'yung ano po, 'yung capability, 'yung capability building in terms of. Uh training, no, the said personnel. On our case, in the planning, we even did uh coaching. No, especially in uh implementing the the uh. Process during the budget, no, uh na kailangan namin i-certify. 'Yung program nila before MFBM uh process the proposed programs and projects uh for the GAAP or for the BEP. So yun 'yung mga uh issues and concern, no, very basic, ma'am, no, na dienten. And hopefully. With with the appointments, no? Critical po kasi dito, ma'am, 'yung appointment of permanent. Persons in charge of whether it is finance, planning, or budget, and then who are the assistants? Kasi kung kung hindi po ma- ma- ma-lagyan ng assistant, pag alimbawa, for instance, babae, nanganak. Mawawala ka ng three months, so ibig sabihin, wala kang accountant for three months, kung wala siyang. Uh assistant, no, an- another uh another accountable officer. So in terms of. Addressing, ma'am, 'yung absorptive capacity, magsimula ka muna doon, no, within the bureaucracy. And this is to every ministries and offices, then everything would would follow in terms of. Uh utilizing utilizing the funds. Kasi lahat nakacentro po sa MFBM. They will not download any money if you will not provide all the necessary documents to them in terms of the uh. Uh disbursement of funds or downloading of funds uh for the MFBM. So yun po, 'yung uh ano, in terms of the strategy, ma'am, we were able to identify some, including. Digitization na para mabilis in terms of the absorptive capacity. And hopefully. We will be able to uh uh do that. And we are also still open po to any inputs. In terms of uh the uh issue on absorptive capacity.
Okay, so even if we pass the BDP now, we can still propose.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, 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 that's what we did last time, then all the inputs was already incorporated po, before we printed finally.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Now, the next question, still on the bureaucracy. Is on the issue on devolution. Uh there was, there's no devolution right now, di ba, from the regional government? Uh, well. But the BDP, the BDP thankfully, and I'm very glad, that it's found in the BDP. That one of the plans of the BARM is to implement the Mandanas ruling. And that it is an opportunity under the first development goal and that which is stable, just, and accountable government. Rightfully so, uh there are currently ongoing efforts already between the national government and LGUs. To rationalize basic services and. Of the Mandanas and the Garcia, fiscal devolution to the. When the, where where this, when the Bangsa Mora expenditure uh program for twenty-twenty-three was being prepared. Are these efforts included there already, considering that it is in the BDP?
Initially, ma'am, uh the. The basis for the twenty-twenty-three initially, because we are still formulating the plan, was the enhanced twelve. Point priority agenda of the Chief Minister. So basically, I think it was not yet included for the twenty-twenty-three. And in line with that also, no, uh there is already an effort by the MILG related to. This, no? Um, ang 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 pinakacrucial po kasi, ma'am, when we talk of devolution, is the. Positive the LGU to absorb devolution. Yan pinakacentro, sa sa tingin namin, based on our assessment, dahil ilan pa ba ho our. And this functional, ilan 'yung kailangan pa talagang tulungan? And then at the barangay level, two thousand five hundred ninety po 'yan, ilan 'yung functional at ilan 'yung kailangan pa ho talagang tulungan? Dahil at the end of the day, it's the LGU from province, city, and then municipality, and even barangay. That is being told na 'yung iran niyo, kailangan gamitin niyo sa taong bayan. So yun 'yung pinaka. I I think one of, one of the things na na uh kinuconsider po dito is, um, at what stage na ready na po. Uh, 'yung 'yung BARM. And and one of the key legislation na na pwedeng mag uh mag. Support dito ay 'yung uh local government code po ni BARM, para maging klaro po 'yung relationship. And then uh mainganyo po lahat nung ano, nung uh nung uh LGUs natin, and all efforts. Na kailangan pong uh support in relation to the capacity of the LGUs to make sure na they are already capable ay. Through the uh MILG, no, for for the BARM. So if this plan is approved, then we have already a basis. Uh in terms of the, although nadiyan ang Mandanas, in terms of uh, you know, the lens of trying to gradually. Gradually uh do something about devolution, because we are trying to tell to the LGU. Na nadagdagan 'yung iran niyo because of the Mandanas, then try to use it naman. Para mag-complement tayo sa region in terms of providing programs and projects. And. The practice of the national government, ma'am, would also give us a very clear lesson. Kung paano rin hunatin gagawin 'yung sa atin later on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mister Speaker, um since Mandanas ruling. Is already is part of the governance strategy under the Bangsa Mora Development Plan. We're sure that we are going to pass the local government code. Na merong provisions on devolution, if that's the case. Um, it doesn't mean na implement kaagad, kasi we would have to assess muna kung kakayanin ba ng LGUs. My last, thank you, thank you, uh BPDA Director General, Mister Speaker, my last question. On uh the assessment made about revenue generation. So we have a weak revenue generation in the BARM. It's not just, it's in the BDP, no, that that that's a very critical assessment. Cause it's not just the regional government, no, weak on revenue generation, but specifically also, especially the local. Government units. So my my question is, um, for example. One of the strategies mentioned under fiscal management is under Strategy Eight. Which is to strengthen the revenue generation through exploration and utilization of natural resources. Pero yun lang ang nakita ko na mag uh strategy. To make sure that we will address the weak uh revenue generation. Aside from enactment of the revenue code. But I uh I would like to see, baka hindi ko lang nabasa, if there are corresponding action points. Either in the programs or the priority policies or legislative agenda. To follow through this strategy. Um, may we be clarified on this? Are there, if any, specific programs, legislative or research priorities? That can be identified under this strategy? Because um ako, the. I'm I'm a planner, I used to be working at NEDA, and I'm looking at twenty years from now. Where wala nang block grant para sa BARM. So kung wala na 'yung block grant, kasi eventually, parang we will generate our own revenues na. And use our natural resources and sources for revenues para buhayin 'yung ating region. So as early as now, we need to strategize already, aside from natural resources, oil, gas. And and all of that. Meron bang, baka hindi ko lang nabasa, legislative or research. Priorities to improve revenue generation? That's that's my last uh question, Mister Speaker.
Yeah, um, thank you, ma'am, thank you for the questions, no? Um, be- based on on our analysis, no, and assessment, nakacentro po 'yung uh potentials po ni BARM on revenue generation. Doon po sa magiging revenue uh code natin, um, that would lay down the uh the uh. Authority of the Bangsa Mora Government to collect. Kasi sa ngayon po, wala ho tayong nakukolekta so far. In terms of the uh even in the four taxes allowed to us, that we will be the one who would collect. But um, 'yung engagement po ng uh Ministry of Finance together with us and other ministries, with DBM and even with finance. On the issues related to this is also ongoing, no, at the IGRB level. But again. Uh, on the BARM level, ito ho mag-si-signify and mag-sisignal. If we will be able to, uh hanggang ngayon, wala pa rin po, uh um legislate. A revenue uh code for the BARM, then that would again trigger uh the uh. The uh revenue generation potentials for the BARM, and then ev- everything will follow. uh the uh the uh revenue generation potentials for the BARM and then ev- everything will follow, no? Tulad po nung na nabanggit namin sa strategy number eight on the potentials po ni uh ni BARM, no, for for uh for uh um generating revenues. Even and even 'yung ano, ve- very basic, no? Yeah, even even 'yung ano, even 'yung uh investment code also is very relevant and very important din po sa atin uh and uh we also discussed it initially uh with development partners dahil um dito po papasok sa investment code 'yung potentials naman po ni Montre aspect. Investment funded by government, investment funded by the private sector and then investment funded by both government and private sector through PPP. So another legislation po yun. Pangatlong legislation po ay uh 'yung uh related po sa ano, sa formulation po ng Industry Development Plan, no, for um for the BARM, no, that would basically uh lay down to us kung ano 'yung mga uh kaila- kakailanganin nating prioritize uh industries uh for the BARM. Even even sa ngayon po, no, with 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 the with the turnover of 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 the national government on on institutions like
Airports.
TC, airports just recently, uh na- nade-deprived pa rin po tayo ng uh mga supposed to be potentials natin. I just talked to Minister Tago a while ago. For the past three years, we were deprived of collecting anything related to LTO and this is a very huge institution who would supposed to be collect revenues for the BARM. Kaya interesado rin po 'yung mga uh region twelve of LTO dahil ma- malaking nawala po sa kanila. Just imagine how many thousands of vehicles na sa lahat o sa atin maparegistered and definitely we will uh generate revenue. Kaya nga po, sabi ko, hangga't kailan po ba nila dapat i-share sa atin 'yung system para makapag uh uh transak napuhu tayo ng license and the recent kaup turnover would also give us the land side potentials po in terms of connectivity naman po through air. So initially, if we will be able to maximize all of these potentials while waiting for the revenue code, then we have something na po already uh for the BARM and that ganun din pang projection namin ma'am. If we will be able to push through with this massive uh revenue generation, then hopefully 'yung block grant magiging bonus na lang po sa atin dahil we will have so much income coming in, no, from from natural resources to transportation, to tourism, to tourism and even to uh uh other aspect of uh the industry like the food security and uh and uh other industry po.
Thank you very much, uh Director General, Mr. Speaker. So I'm expecting that the partner BRDIP, Regional Development Investment Plan or Program ay magkakaroon ng listahan ng mga proyekto, including research na gagawin, mga plans and also legislative agenda kung paano natin i-increase 'yung revenue ng BARM. And i-insert ko lang 'yung sa zones of ano, uh cooperation natin sa dito sa maritime, no? Because if we don't pass any law on that, uh masasayang 'yung revenues na pwede natin kunin. Thank you very much for answering my questions sa Director General, Mr. Speaker. Salam alay kumag matulay o barakat.
Yes, uh before we proceed, we have a fifteen minute uh break, no? A- 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 as a prayer break. Yes, fifteen minutes.
Yes, mag prayer break po muna tayo para makarest din si DJ Ali. So we have um six more. Pwede po bang sa mga next na magka-question, pwede, can we limit it to or simplify the question and to the answerer, pwede rin?
Okay, the next um in the list. Can we please ano appeal make an appeal to all our um members of the parliament who wish to question? Who is to who wish to ask kung pwede pong ano again to simplify the questions and for our B D G to please sim- simplify the answer also. M P Mendoza after M P Mendoza, M P Sankey and then M P Don Loong, M P Babao and then finally M P Ampatuan.
Mister Speaker, I only have one particular question. Particularly on chapter ten, enhancing and strengthening peace, public order, safety and security, and upholding human rights for inclusive, peaceful, progressive and sustainable development. My question, Mister Speaker run this way. In the human right aspect, it only mention about horizontal plan as a serious human rights abuse. Although the report also mention there is a decline, but then it also recognizes that the state has failed to investigate. My point here, Mister Speaker is that I haven't seen in the report that the root cause or the one of the root cause of the conflict is pertaining to land. I am very much concerned about this, Mister Speaker, especially so to the plight of our indigenous community on the issue of land dispossession and discontinued existence of conflict which ah there is a need to swift and appropriate intervention through policies and an institution by all concern. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, thank you. Um yeah. I I I think the focus of the question, ma'am, was uh with regards to the uh report uh that na unfortunately hindi hindi iklaro 'yung report of all the uh uh issues of uh human rights na
Yes, ma'am, Mister Speaker, it only confine to ah rin diba 'yun horizontal plan?
Ah yeah.
'Yung isang pinakamalaking concern talaga dito 'yung issue talaga ng lupa na pinag
Yeah, tenurial.
Yeah, so ah not is in the report. It was never been mentioned.
Yes, 'yung 'yung report to the report dun sa development plan. Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, um intindihin po natin na 'yung development plan natin will uh provide to us uh strategies on how to deal with concerns po no related to peace and order kasama na pong human rights. Pati 'yung uh issues on uh land no in tenurial and this basically uh are being addressed through programs and uh projects po ng ministries and offices in terms of providing the necessary approach no related to the ano to the uh especially on land, land no, uh tenurial. Uh kasama na po dyan 'yung ano 'yung uh addressing the uh uh approach of the various agencies like MAFAR, MENDRE, and even uh um the MIPA, diba? Uh on tenurial, kasi sabi nga ng uh national during the discussions uh with us and even to our internal assessment, uh 'yung overlapping of mandates po nila no as to dekad, dekadsi, and then 'yung uh sa uh MAFAR naman na binibigay to agrarian and then sa MENDRE no through land titling. So 'yun po 'yung uh isang approach po natin na sa tingin namin na pwede nating uh magawa ng paraan na na magkaroon ho tayo ng uh policy direction no with 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 these agencies to make a clear uh approach po on how to deal with the the land po na na nangyayari na nagiging root cause po din po ng problema ng uh mga I P S natin ika nga in relation to the security and even to the human rights issues po. So uh napaloob na po dun sa ano natin sa sa development plan natin with regards to the 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 push for us uh a policy that would basically address the concern on tenurial uh problem within the BARM po. And uh even the ministries uh were able to provide programs that impo uh with regards to this uh aspect po. Thank you.
The next. Yeah, the next to
Next in line is M P Sankey.
Uh thank you very much, Madam Floor Leader, for uh calling my attention to this uh very important gathering of the B T A members. The topic for today is about the Bangsamuro development plans for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-eight to two thousand twenty-eight. My concern, Your Honor, fellow members of this august body, was that some way back in twenty twenty-two, we were also required to submit some proposals or ideas on how to further develop the Bangsamuro homeland. And for that reason, we submitted and discussed this Sabitae Committee of the whole, 'yung Bangsamuro Development Plans for two thousand twenty-two. I hope to suggest to the crafters of the Bangsamuro Development Program known to include more than two dozens of Muslim settlements covered by presidential decree as well as strengthening of implementation of PD ten eighty-three. When we talk of PD ten eighty-three, we are talking about the Sharia court's implementation. And you'll be surprised that this PD ten eighty-three 'yan ang hinahangad ng ating mga Muslim. To further make the Muslim better Muslim is how to implement the Sharia courts in the country. And you'll be surprised to know that when I was with the Office of Muslim Affairs as Secretary, I tried my best to look into this and fully implement PD ten eighty-three. I found out that PD ten eighty-three created five Sharia district court, Parang Equivalente Yanza Regional Trial Court, and fifty-one circuit court or municipal circuit court. And you'll be surprised that the Sharia bar examination came out with more than seven hundred Sharia lawyers. But you will also be surprised that not one of the five Sharia district courts were implemented. And out of fifty-one circuit court, only thirty was implemented, twenty-one was never implemented. And our Sharia Muslim lawyers have been appealing to me to intercede in their behalf. I said, I'm not a lawyer. And they said, you know more about this. So I submitted this idea to the craptor, the Bangsamuro Development Program to include those uh plans and program to implement final the Sharia court under PD ten eighty-three. And in addition to this uh PD ten eighty-three, when the government tried to strengthen further the Sharia court under Republic Act nineteen fifty-four, it created the Sharia appellate court. You can just imagine, our government is giving everything for us, Muslim to become better Muslim. And in spite of the Supreme Court giving the creation of the Sharia appellate court, the pass, I would say, the arm paid to enact the enabling law to implement the Sharia appellate court. And therefore, we have how many vacancy to make the Muslim better Muslim in pursuance for the Sharia court? Five Sharia district court, not one was implemented. Fifty-one circuit court, only thirty was implemented. The Sharia appellate court was not implemented. And thus, this representation made a submission to the Honorable Internship Minister. In my memorandum, I have here the copy of my memorandum. This was dated uh wait a while, this was dated July three, twenty twenty pa. I wrote a memo asking the implementation of PD ten eighty-three as well as to further make the Muslim better Muslim. I included in that letter of July three, twenty twenty to the Honorable
With with your respect to the gentleman from uh uh Magindanao del Sur, uh we're waiting for the question, sir. If you have question, please ask.
Can you please give me some time because this is covered by a memorandum addressed to a very big uh official of our office and that I suppose that this was included and referred to the craptor of the Bangsamuro Development Program. And I found out that this were not included. There were more than thirty-five settlements meaning land for the landless Bangsamuro. Thirty-five settlement, thousands of hectare, and not one was made to be occupied by
So we will take note of that. Uh the Director General should take note of that, that the gentleman from Magindanao del Sur has made a proposal.
Can I can I just uh only for a few minutes? Uh this this is part of the plans of the program this august body.
Uh this is supposed to be an interpolation, sir, uh uh
May just be allowed only for three minutes.
If there is no question, we will give the floor to those who are willing to ask questions.
Yes, let me finish so that they can ask my question.
You can ask the question now.
Uh my concern further is uh under executive order one four two during the arm and now inherited by BARM, there were government-owned controlled corporation existing the arm. Then that is supposed to be turned over to the BARM, but they were never being implemented. I am referring to the Southern Philippines Development Authority projects. And that I am hoping to see that in the Bangsamuro Development Program but were never incorporated in spite of my trans- dismissal of some document. Another thing that I would like to take up is that of the Islamic Bank. I used to be the chairman of Amana Bank, and Amana Bank is the most promising bank in the country. That in fact, Amana Bank now is a subsidiary subsidiary of Development Bank of the Philippines precisely because I filed a case against T B P. I should be have been appreciated by the Bangsamuro for doing my job. I filed a case because they want to dispose Amana Bank to become a private. Amana Bank is the product of our blood, our tears, and even some people died. And that bank was created by the government as a state bank of the Bangsamuro. And I'm surprised that up to this point in time, we have never thought of making Amana Bank a state depositary bank of the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region. And I understand from the finance
So uh where is the question, Mister uh
My question, Your Honor, was that per my memorandum dated July twenty twenty, here is, I submitted this plans and program to be incorporated in the Bangsamuro development plans, but I found out that not one was implemented. Another thing that you must also know, Your Honor, was that there was this case. When Chairman Ms. Wari surpassed, there was a commander named Commander Nara in Wow. He was given twenty-four thousand hectare land to be given to the Bangsamuro Mujahideen for them to own land. And up to this point, this land was never relocated, was never subdivided. And we have what we called CARP, Comprehensive Agrarian Reform. To my mind, this is not a comprehensive agrarian reform. That is confiscatory agrarian reform program. The CARP, comprehensive, is becoming a confiscatory. So why why are we not going to incorporate this in the Bangsamuro development plans? Those things that I have already submitted, complete with attachment, complete with supporting paper. Now, because I'm giving a short time, uh I would like to emphasize 'yung apatlang na submission ko. 'Yung pres- 'yung settlement, land for the landless Bangsamuro including Mujahideen. What I'm saying is that the we Muslim, whatever we ask from this government, binibigay ng gobyerno. Pero tayong mismus- Muslim, we do not have a core group mentality to implement what was already given by the government. So who is to be
Uh yes, uh sir, the copy of the B D P was given to you. If you if you have any questions on the B D P or if you have any proposal for amendment, you could have come up with a proposed amendment because there are still uh floor leader, are there still are there still there are still three persons who would want to ask questions, sir. We would the the time the time is wasted if uh there is no question and the other members are not able to ask their question.
Oh, my mind, Mister Chair- Chairman was is just sharing of ideas to further enrich the Bangsamuro development plans. And that having said those things, this representation uh is also happy to have shared these thoughts and ideas. 'Yung tinatawag natin na Amana Bank dapat kinuwanan ng Bangsamuro Autonomous Region 'yan. You can just imagine, last and final statement about Amana Bank. Amana Bank was cre- precisely created as a state bank. You can just imagine, we have five provinces, three cities, hundred seventeen barang municipalities, two thousand seven hundred barangays with an annual era of twenty-two billion pesos not
One year interest pension
is uh deposited to the Amana Bank. So
Uh session resumed. Floor leader.
Okay, thank you. Next in line, M P Don Loong.
Akala ko sasagutin na 'yung mga tanong ko. Thank you.
The you have no questions. You have no questions, sir.
Yeah, 'yung 'yung Amana Bank po uh uh based on the uh things that happened, no, previews, under discussion na po 'yan under the I G R B. In fact, Minister Pakasam is a uh part of the discussions po in acquisition of the Amana Bank. So nasa discussions na po stage 'yung uh issue on Amana Bank uh with regards to that, no. And then uh we fully take note po ng ano 'yung mga binanggit niya po kanina.
Please take note, please take note of your sentiment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh for my questions, Mister Speaker, I would just uh run through it and the uh resource person may or may not answer it as long as it's just uh noted. Uh the first is about uh our agriculture, forestry and fishing is no longer the leading sector in the BARM in terms of economic output. So um can we make it clear on how the investment will contribute to higher agriculture, forestry and fishing? Second, uh point in the Bangsamuro Development Plan regarding unmerging of uh ministries regarding connectivity of Bongao to Malaysia. Uh please correct the the point about the agro processing in Sulu because there was none mentioned there about growth centers. Please include Maymbung and Luuk uh to that. Um about tourism areas, I think hindi po nakapunta 'yung tourism officer. Uh old list pa 'yun. Marami na pong mga tourism areas sa Parang, Omar and in Dhanan. Uh it will be unfair to to the other municipalities. Wi-Fi connectivity hindi po siya naemphasize sa Bangsamuro Development Plan. Uh sa Bangsamuro Justice System, purely on Sharia lang ang namimention. So we will not be supporting the Bangsam uh the barangay justice system. 'Yung uh policy on eco-sales and free port, hindi na po ba ipapasok 'yung water trade system. 'Yung uh sa uh emphasize on the addressing the flooding requires the I G R intervention on the Mindanao River basin. Sana po maemphasize 'yun. Ilang beses na mention that one hundred percent electrified ang Bangsamuro, which I I strongly uh disagree. Kasi konti lang ang energized, so please uh check o on that. Um it also mentioned about the VICTO having a program about some I C T programs. But clearly, VICTO is not acting like the counterpart of the Department of Information and uh Communication uh and Technology. Sino ba ang counterpart ng D I C T sa Bangsamuro? Sana maemphasize po 'yun because broadband and internet connectivity is uh crucial. Waste management, tama po 'yun. Nakalagay sa Sulu, wala pa siyang landfill. Environmental protection, laging baha dito sa Cotabato at maraming lowland areas. Seaweed, pinagmamalaki natin number one 'yung tawi-tawi, pero wala po akong nakitang strategy to really help uh the seaweed industry in uh in tawi-tawi. And finally, your natural resources. I was hoping to see the Bangsamuro Development Corporation as one of the strategies to explore it. 'Yun lang po, Mister Chair. You may or may not answer any of the questions, Mister Resource Person.
Anyway, this being recorded, Mister Speaker. Um we're very happy to have the proposals no mentioned uh if in the event na talagang wala no uh on the various issues uh mentioned po no with 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 regards to to the uh yeah, um to the to the to the questions no. Pero um napakarami no, sagutin ko na lang 'yung ilan dun, siguro kahit may isa lang. Uh 'yung A F F na binanggit niyo kanina no na sabi nga uh nalampasan na siya Uh yung AFF na binanggit niyo kanina, no, na sabi nga uh nalampasan na siya ng services. Um hindi naman nangangulugan na hindi malakas, no? Malakas siya. But uh I think may mga missing ano lang, missing element with regards to the uh industry on agriculture, no? Um maganda na yung nasimulan natin, but yung mga creation of uh for instance, G O C C is related to agriculture that would be very, very crucial po in generating revenues for the barm. Hopefully mangyari na yan this year dahil that would somehow boost the economy of the barm uh through that uh G O C C na nagagawin natin for agriculture, fisheries and even for agroforestry. So I'll, I'll focus my answer to that, to that uh query. Thank you po.
Next, MP Babao.
Thank you very much, uh Mister Speaker. Uh just uh five minute uh time for me to ask question. First is, I would like to be uh we would like to be inform about your statement earlier about this uh production in Lando del Sur and Marawi City. Medyo hindi mo, you're not able to elaborate about this uh production in Lando del Sur and Marawi City. Can you please uh uh repeat uh your statement about that?
Yeah, Mister, Mister Speaker, uh can I answer? Thank you. Um related po yun dun sa issue on the inflation, no, na napag-usapan kanina. Kasi during the previous years, no, bakit ang resulta nung uh PSA uh napababa po ng uh Lando del Sur yung poverty from high na sixty plus to seven point something. Ibig sabihin ka-level na niyang Metro Manila and other uh urbanized areas. So isa po sa dahilan yung uh sinabi ko kanina, and in part of the inflation dahil sabi ng PSA sa atin yung uh presyo ng commodity within Lando del Sur generally and even Marawi City, mas mababa kumpara sa presyo sa labas. And this is basically because of the influx of the support within the area itself, no, from the development partners because of the issue of uh Marawi. And then uh yung uh support po ni barm for the various special programs of the CM and then the ministries including Tabang. And then uh yung uh security environment po na improve for the past three years na generally peaceful na po dun sa lugar. Even industries, no? Pagpupunta po tayo from Parang to Marawi, kaliwatkanan na po. Every municipality may gasoline station na po. So ito yung mga bagay na nag-trigger, no? Dun sa sabi ng PSA sa atin, iilan, no? Dun sa bagay na nag-trigger na bakit uh napababa ng uh Lando del Sur yung uh poverty incidence niya for twenty uh twenty one compared to twenty eighteen uh year. Yun po.
Okay, thank you very much. Another question because uh you know, uh during orientation in Dabao for the new membership parliament, there was uh an, a, an announcement uh statement saying that um our GRDP, gross domestic product, is seventy five percent. Now, based on the uh plan that you have submitted, the, the copy of which I just received yesterday, I was not able to read it. But uh you were saying earlier that the target of GDP is eight point nine percent. Now, some saying uh eh eh baka indiretente to mamit, ano? Pero sa akin, uh personally, uh this is achievable because uh the only difference is very uh little compared to the seven point five uh uh percent growth rate. So my, my question on this, Director, is that what is your implementing plan? What is your plan on how to achieve uh uh or to reach the target of uh eight point nine or even surpass the target? Kasi maybe you can uh, you can even uh uh reach ten percent growth, which is uh you know, very commendable. Now, oh, what is the plan? Kasi look, uh that uh that is my second question. Ano yung updates din, no? Because uh Director, yung tanong kanina ng mga MP, when we're having uh some snacks inside, lumala po yung, yung growth rate natin, lumolobo. Pero ang tanong, paparating yung mga mahihirap, lumolobo rin ang dami. So as expected, uh while our growth rate increase, dapat yung mga, mga mahihirap natin, Mister Speaker, eh bababa din. So that is why I'm asking, what is the plan to reduce the poverty incidence in, on the barm? While you are looking that you have, you have achieved seven point five percent and then you have a target of eight point nine percent. So what about uh, wha- what is the reason why eh lumalaki rin yung mga mahihirap sa baba? Y- yun ang, yun ang aking tanong. Anong plan niyo para at least dumadahil yung uh developments sa grassroots, especially in the barangay?
Yeah, yeah.
That is my question, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah. Uh when we try to relate the uh incident, no, uh for the past three years of the ini- uh first phase of transition, uh nakita po natin, sir, na nung uh humikap po tayo ng seven point five from a pandemic scenario, napababa din po natin yung uh poverty, no, uh from region wide, no, from uh as high as uh fifty plus to twenty nine. And then one of the very promising province within the barm, but uh napababa yun ay ang uh Lando del Sur. Diba? So, um kaya makikita mo dun, hindi na nga ang ulugan na within the past three years mas maraming tayong nagenerate na poor, because mas napababa natin so far, no? Uh until twenty twenty one, kasi every three years natin kinukuha yung poverty incidence, no, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty two, and then eventually sa twenty twenty four. So this is because, no, ang, ang actually, kung i- i-sasummarize mo, uh it would require a whole of government approach to be able to sustain the uh growth na ganyan. When I say whole of government approach, ibig sabihin, it's the entire government na kailangan uh magtrabaho para ma- ma-sustain mo yan. No, that would already include partly yung mga investment that would come, programs that would implement on the grassroots and then participation of the private sector and then community on the ground. If we will able to sustain that, and it seems during the past uh three years until twenty twenty one, ganun ho yung uh naging approach natin, kaya nagkaroon ho tayo ng ganong indicator, then we're very confident that within the next few years, even until twenty twenty eight, based on the proposal that we have, yung GRDP natin would go as uh high as eight to, to nine. Uh provided that within that sphere of time, six years, um maintain yung security environment and even kung ma-enhance pa, lalo pang lateng mapalakas yung ekonomiya ng Bangsa Moro.
Okay, I have another question. Uh this is about the halal industry. Because uh based on the, the world record, we have at least eleven trillion dollars halal industry. Now, mom support, sa I mean supply, nothing. This is for the export. And you will be surprised, Director, but the number one supplier, one to seven suppliers in the world are not Muslim countries, not even Malaysia and Indonesia, Brazil, Liberia, Australia. Now, this is a very big potential for us if we could uh uh seriously go into this, develop our halal industry as provided for under public health intervention pipeline for. Now, can we, may we know from you, what is your plan on how to develop uh our halal industry, especially in the halal certifying uh agency? Institute uh agency, because there are several, several uh group even government agency are, are certified that this product is halal, that will the product reach the Middle East, hindi pala siya halal. So my question is, what is your program, plans for uh for us to be, you know, uh engaged in the halal industry that we can also uh best our uh people, yung especially yung pwede tayong magyabang na kami, pwede kami mag-supply ng mga halal foods. So can you, can you let us know what as, what is the plan of the Office of the Chief Minister as far as the halal industry is concerned?
Yeah, sir, um with regards to the halal industry, no? Um basically, we're already in the stage of operationalizing the institutions. Institution that would basically take care the, the halal industry for the barm. In fact, nasa admin code po natin uh yung uh uh institution na yan. And we have already organized the board, halal board, nagmi-meet na po sila and meron na rin po silang implementing rules and regulations. So yung centro po nung uh success nung uh halal uh industry natin would basically be in the institution itself. In the event that we will be able to fully operationalize that, then yung certification would definitely be achieved by the Bangsa Moro. Then eventually, yung supply would be certified and then we will go, you know, on the industry itself.
How fully operationalize that plan that you have? Are you going to, to establish a halal hub? Because I proposed before to establish that in Pollo. So that all the industries, manufacturer, uh especially in the Malaysia, Indonesian investors, will come in to put their uh uh put their uh factories in, in, in the barm areas because they know that the raw materials that is going to be used in the production, manufacture of halal foods uh majority are coming from our homeland. So uh ano yung sinasabi mong uh, is that referred to, I mean, uh rel- in relation to the plan of putting up a halal hub? Like in Malaysia and uh China and Japan also, they're coming up with this. So I proposed uh before to put up a halal hub uh manufacturing in Pollo, no, because you have five hundred hectares uh property there that can be developed into a halal hub.
Thank you, sir. Uh basically, that would be the prerogative of the halal board, no? Uh we, we paparating po namin yung uh concern you, sir, with regards to the establishment of the, the hub itself, no? But uh ang importante po dito, we have, we were able to establish already the board that would take care of the halal industry for the barm. Then they will do their mandate kasama na po yan, no? We will uh make sure na ipaparating po namin that the need for that to be able to maximize the potential of halal for barm po.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a study for that, no? Meron akong libreng sinulat about, I'll give you a copy. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, MP Babao.
Pinultimate uh MP to ask questions, MP Ampatuan. And finally, wala na pong hangyo ha? Si MP Parkasyo ang huli. Si MP Ampat- oh, mauna daw si MP Parkasyo. Okay. The lady has yielded her slot.
Happy to uh, uh the Chief Minister who was uh here earlier, to the Speaker, the floor leader and my colleagues. Assalamualaikum wrakmatullahi wabarakatuh. Um I, I, I got the copy of uh the in, uh development plan, I think, yesterday. So there were, uh there was a email sent, uh electronic copy sent uh earlier. So um and I think uh eighty or ninety percent of the MPs have similar uh situation. Now uh, that means that we have not fully uh studied the development plan and we need time to, to do that. For that matter, um I was glad to know that earlier, Parang merong uh affirmation yung mga, yung mga request ng dalawang MPs who spoke here, that we could still contribute to enhance the, the development plan after we approve it. Now, I'm asking and confirming, I want to have a confirmation that uh we could still, after its approval, if it will be approved today, that we can still uh uh contribute to enhance uh develop, improve uh the development plan after it's approved.
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely. We, we, we uh, we still uh, we, we could uh, yeah, we can still consider any inputs from the parliament after this approval to make it fur- further enhance the document.
Marami pong salamat. I just want that uh to be put on record, uh so uh pagka kami ay tumayo at mag-propose ay hindi sasabihin na wala na kasi na-upop na. Kasi maraming, for example, may mga concerns ako tungkol sa uh maritime potentials of Tawi-Tawi and I have not seen anything mentioned about uh a proposed legislation on that matter. And there are legislative proposals that we would like, or I would like to introduce uh regarding multifarious uh development uh strategies in the barm, which I have not seen uh in the presentation earlier. So marami pong salamat. Thank you.
Thank you, MP Parkasyo. Now, finally, MP Ampatuan.
The lady from Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum wrakmatullahi wabarakatuh. Um tinitignan ko si Hans, pagka klase kami, kagaya ni Mam. Naalala ko tuloy nung sinabi ni Mam na yung training, parang bumalik lahat yung taba ng kinamang namin sa kanan. Anyway, that beside the point. Um actually, I just browsed the documents and um I find it comprehensive and an improved version of, of the BDP one. But first, I would like to ask some points about the process. Um, one is when we talk about the plan, we talk about the three documents. And in the BDP one, we have the results matrix. And I guess, and I suppose that when you first outline the preparation of the BDP two, you tried to look back on the um extent of the achievement of the result matrices. My question is, how do we fare in relation to the achievement of the targets um as outlined in the results matrix, previous results matrix?
Yes, uh Mam, how, how do we rate, rate ba?
Yes, um how do we fare? Um whether kung siguro in a scale of one to ten, and being the highest, nilagay kasi natin sa result matrix yung alam bawa sa governance. Ilan yon LG na maging S U N G? Ilan yung may establish na mga opisyon na, so nakalagay dun sa results matrix? Ang tanong ko ngayon, doon sa unang plano, ano sa tingin mo yung achieved natin in a scale of one to ten? Nakakalahati ba tayo o wala?
Sobra po. Ah with, with, with regards to the uh first BDP po Mam, no, uh although I, we were not able to uh show it, no, uh in relation to the macroeconomic uh indicators po na, uh we, we uh, we projected, no, sa first BDP. We were able to achieve last twenty twenty one, no, hindi pa ho twenty twenty two yan. Uh the five, the six, we have already achieved five out of the six.
That's the macroeconomic targets, but there are indicators.
That's the macroeconomic targets, but there are indicators in the results matrices that are, that actually, it's not the six uh indicators that we are talking, but um, in general, because there is a translation in the results matrix, what are the specifics that should be monitored?
Hmm.
In relation to the M and E, kasi may M and E component 'yung plan, no? Ngayon, sa evaluation ng ating M and E, saan tayo doon sa BDP one?
Yeah. Uh, ganito po 'yung naging challenge po natin sa BDP one. When we first formulated the BDP, in an environment na all of the ministries except for three uh have yet to uh appoint the respective permanent planning officers and then uh capacity building is required, no? And then on our part, also, even at the PPA level, we have also just uh appointed, no? Most of uh, or some of our uh employees. Isahoy 'yan sa maging, naging challenge namin Mam, in how to deal with the first matrix. In fact, um, we continue to further enhance it, even the second BDP now in relation to the, to the indicators, kung saan na ba, alinbawa, in terms of, tulad nun nabanggit niyo sa M I L G, uh enhancing the LGUs, nakakailan na ba sila? Alinbawa, for the past, um, for, for twenty twenty, ilang SLG ang naiisuan? O di kaya sila uh, asim salamat awarde, and then ilan na 'yung sa twenty twenty-one, and then ilan na sa twenty twenty-two? Yun ho 'yung naging
So we happened a certain uh
When uh, yeah, when we
At extent we achieved in the first BDP.
Based on the RM, if you try
Based on the RM, because it, it's part of the plan.
Precisely, Ma, precise.
Okay, so I think it's part of the rooms for improvement?
Basically, yes, yes.
Still on the process, Mr. Speaker. Um, it's mentioned in the proposed resolution one four seven that um, the BDP as a framework was adopted by the Bed Sea, um last
December twenty-six.
December twenty-three. And um, my question is that, since um the Bed Sea is composed of other stakeholders other than those in the government, regional government center like our local government units. My question is, ilang gubernador 'yung umopo sa Bed Sea? At nagsabing, go na tayo dyan because we are part of it?
Uh, with that instance, Mam, during that Bed Sea meeting, wherein uh we uh, nagtake ng oath ang uh new member namin, si uh Throne Leader Tony Ley and uh Bruce Matabalaw of uh Cotabato City, who were physically present din po. Uh, ay via Zoom pa, kasi nagzoom kami that time because of the availability of the Chief Minister. Um, but on the part of the LGUs, ang uh, naka-attend po in terms of the five province ay 'yung mga PPDs po nila during that time when uh the, the development plan was deliberated in the, in the Bed Sea.
So wala pong niisang governor?
Uh, on that time po, uh the PPDs were the one who were tasked by the governor to represent them.
So I think it's one of the challenges also na
But uh
Realizing that the Bed Sea is somehow technical at some time
Yeah.
Especially when we talk about the, the plan, um, baka hindi 'yung appreciation, no? So kaya pinadala 'yung, 'yung uh PPDs. But nonetheless, um, I think, um, important 'yung evidence natin na 'yung, 'yung nagsubscribe sila with the, with the BDP.
Yeah. Mam, in the case of Basilan, during our consultation, and we presented the salient points also, G, Jim Mataman was physically present, and in fact, he gave his uh priorities during that consultation. And even Governor Sakortan, when we went to Suluhulo, he was also physically present with uh most of the mayors po uh during the consultations. So uh, he also delivered his uh, uh inputs uh during that uh formulation. So, um, with, with these two provinces, uh we're very confident na um, the, the development plan's appreciation ay okay po sa kanila. And including Governor Salio Tawi-Tawi, I met him in San Buanga City after the consultation to inform him about the, the, the second BDP po uh, uh for, uh for the bar. Uh only um, Magindanao and Lano del Sur, dahil talaga nung pumunta kami uh, wala, wala sila sa, sa provincial capital during that time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Um, still on the process because I read the portion about the parliament itself. Um, gusto kong tanungin, sino umopo? Because I was writing about the performance of the BTA, and um, I think parang 'yung mga nakasulat dyan medyo unfair. So siguro kung nabasa ninyo, bakasabihin niyo unfair sa atin. Ang gusto kong tanungin, sino ba 'yung nagrepresentant sa parliament?
During the workshop, Mam. Uh, ang planning division po ng parliament, Mam, when we did the workshop in, in
Okay. I think um, uh I would like to request my colleagues that if you don't agree of, of what is written there, then better sound off. Kasi mukhang parang wala tayong masyadong ginawa. Eh, even 'yung, you know, mamaya, iisay-isain ko. Uh, parang napagod din naman tayo lahat, pero hindi lumabas dyan sa document. But anyway, um 'yung going back dun sa, na raise na rin ng aking mga kasamahan and when we talk about this plan, we talk about the three documents, and in fact, dito sa BDP two, dinagdagan niyo pa ng isa. Ang uh, nakalagay dito sa resolution, ang aaprabahan natin ng 'yung BDP. Dito pa 'yung resolution, at uh, palagay ko lahat ng mga ito ay nag-aantay ng mag-aapprove at gusto na akong umopo. But anyway, um, nakasaad dito na aaprabahan natin 'yung BDP. Kaso lang, 'yung BDP tatlong document 'yan, at apat pa nga eh, pero tatlo lang 'yung at the minimum. 'Yung framework, ang framework po na sinasabi natin na itong makapal na ito, ang pangalawang document ay 'yung listahan sana ng mga programs and projects. At ang pangatlong document ay 'yung sinasabi kong results matrix na imomonitor kung ano ang level of performance ng achievement ng plano. Dalawa, tatlo po 'yung document. Ngayon, ang tanong ko po, pag inapprove ba natin ito? Itong ngayon, inapprove natin 'yung resolution, what will happen to the two documents? Are you still gonna share it to us and present to us and have our comments and recommendation? Because in the BDP one, I think there was some point that it was referred back to the committee and discuss it further. My question now is, what will be our process? Because we're missing the two documents. What will be our process? Ako, wala akong disagreement to approve this one. I know that this is important uh for the, for the release of the SDF. I, I, I fully support, but my question is, what is the process that would ensure that what we know or what we want to be part of it? Kasi kasama man dito sa plano 'yung parliament, paano malagay doon sa plano, doon sa investment program? So, ibabalik niyo ba 'yung investment component at saka 'yung results matrix sa, sa parliament? Ano 'yung magiging proseso natin? So I believe the gentleman cannot answer that because it's a process question that uh needs to be addressed by the parliament itself. So as you mentioned earlier, meron pong nakasalang na resolution that we will um introduce later and uh upon consulting with members of the parliament earlier, uh sa mga side uh talks po. Ang nakikita natin na proseso is, the framework can be um approved today subject to the incorp- incorporation of comments, additional inputs of members of the parliament so that we can trigger the request sa DBM for the SDF. But the resolution will also be amended to, to read that there will be se- separate approvals of the attachments, o po.
Okay, that's good to hear. Um, that's reassuring on, on our part. Kasi ang, ang sabi nga nila, the devil is in the details. So right now, the devil is not yet here because we don't have the details. So, um, it's, it's a reassuring uh statement coming from the floor leader. Um, sige, medyo shortcut po na. Um, dito sa page twenty-five ng document, um, part of the prospects na mention 'yung normalization and CAMs transformation. It so happened that um, I'm part of the CAMs transporti- transformation and I'm Pilasa Alamiya as part of the um task force on the commissioning of combatants. Um, while we recognize these prospects, I didn't see the translation um in the document. I, I know it's a long, it's a long story, no? Um, but um, my point here is, I think this is an opportune time for us in the Bangsa Moro government to really look at what is our contribution with regards to how do we prostrate the normalization process? We cannot just wait for the national government and the donor communities to come in and leave it to them, the faith of those, the commission combatants and the CAMs transformation. Uh, we have our resources at hand, at our disposal that could readily help our combatants and um in the trans- transformation of our CAMs. Um, my hope and prayer is that at some point in the document, sana hindi ko nabasa, sana nandyan. At kung hindi pa, sana mapasok natin and even in the investment program, no? So, please answer.
Uh, the, the gist of the question, Mam, can you, can, can you
'Yung, if there is a translation of the recognition of the 'yung parang normalization, nasa page twenty-five that talks about normalization, prospecting normalization and CAMs transformation. Uh, we recognize that as some of the prospects, but um, do we want uh have we, have we uh factored in, in, in our strategies and in building programs and projects?
Um Um, the recognition, Mam, is basically because of the workshops, no, that we did in Davao and other area. With regards to normalization, especially on the security committee of, of, of the, of the Bed Sea, no? Uh, kasama po kasi natin dun ng AFP, PNP, na nag-ano, nag-uh, nag-uh nag-uh, sali dun sa, sa, sa workshop. That's why we were able to include it in the prospects. Dahil nga uh nalaman dun na mukha nga nga mabagal at uh medyo uh nahirapan din ang national government. And with that, we are also able to formulate some strategies.
Ah, so meron.
Right, with regards to this uh, 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 on page fifty-five, no? Some strategies, and this would be the basis also uh, uh of, of the administration and in providing uh programs. And uh, we hope that uh we could also get some policy guidance po uh from the Chief Minister with regards to the uh, magiging support po ni Bar. In fact, uh, he himself fully recognized that there has to be some support talaga.
Yeah, um, so ping kanina na, with the presence of the Chief Minister, I could ask that.
Yes.
But anyway, nandito si MP Byds, uh, ang bottom line naman ito is translation into
Into actua.
Into budget. So
Thank you.
Ang ina- inaantay ng ating mga decommission combatants, ating mga kababayan ay ano 'yung programa. Hindi lang ng national government, pero ng bar.
Yes, po, yes.
Na tayo, kasi hindi man tayo malawalan, constituents man natin 'yan. So that's my personal advocacy, actually. Thank you, um. Um, my next question is on Madaris, uh, page twenty-seven. Uh, I think uh part of the prospects, prospects ba 'yan?
Prospect.
Prospects. Uh, it says there that uh
More dominant.
Madaris education will become a more dominant form of education in the bar. Is that the trajectory that we are eyeing in the next six years?
Yeah, Mam, with the enactment of the Education Code, no, which part of the code pertains to Madaris. Uh, that is the trajectory of the MBHD, based on the uh planning officers who participated in our workshop that graduate for the next six years.
I have a worry on the word dominant.
Um, okay.
Um, kasi may, when we, we have our oath-taking in Malacanyang, I could remember that there was a policy guidance coming from the president with regards to education. So, baka lang kailangan nating iribisit?
Yeah, Mam, I fully uh understand na medyo uh may, may ibig sabihin pag sinabi nating dominant, no?
Baka kasi may misinterpretation.
Yeah, baka.
Pass natin dito ngayon, uh, uh, sa nor- ay uh
Yes, yes.
Center of Madaris in the Philippines.
Well noted po, Mam. We fully recognize that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, ito panahin ko lang, 'yung page twenty-nine. I cannot help it. Kasi mukhang nasisi 'yung parliament na hindi napasa. Pero we're talking about technological aspect, pero bakit ang sinisi 'yung parliament? Na uh failure, the word used there is failure uh of certain priority codes. I know there was a failure of some priority codes, but parang hindi, may, may konting disconnect for me because we're talking about technological aspect. Um, but and, and the use of the word failure is parang failure na rin tayong lahat. Uh, there are many reasons behind why we didn't pass the priority codes. Um, I think we should be very, very careful kasi this, parang parang ako gusto ko protektahan 'yung image ng parliament as much as I want, no? So, baka namang pwedeng iribisit, okay?
We will, we will, Mam, we will. Thank you.
Okay, um, next is on the special strategy. Medyo technical na po ito, pero uh, ang gusto kong itanong dun sa special strategy, from the previous special strategy, ano 'yung malaking pagkakaiba? Uh, aside from pinpointing the growth centers um, and having these three strategies as our main um strategies, connectivity, vulnerability, and what's the other one? Ang tanong ko is, ano 'yung malaking pagkaiba? Um, dun sa connectivity, for example, uh, we realize that uh the connectivity of Cotabato to Bongao has been uh in place. But in the coming six years, ano 'yung expansion areas natin in terms of connectivity? Meron sinabi kanina, baka pwede maconnect 'yung Bongao papuntang Palawan. Meron sinabi kanina na baka pwede maconnect yung Bongao papuntang Palawan. Maconnect ang Cotabato to Sulu. No? So, ano yung pagkaiba nong dati na na plano natin? Um, for example, just for connectivity?
Nung nung una po ma'am, no? Nung unang plano natin. Hindi masyado natin well define yung uh. Although we were able to identify roles, no? But uh. On trying to make sure na we would be able to see uh yung functional roles nila. Na maging well defined na siya, yun ho yung wala doon sa dati. But this time. We make sure na with the uh inclusion of Cotabato City, for instance, no? And uh on the issue of connectivity, we we would be able to be. Clearly define yung mga functional roles po nung mga potential areas natin from Sulu.
May enumeration na tayo. May enumeration in the document?
In.
There will be a succeeding document.
Yeah, um, it would be basically be reflected here uh in the document.
Is it already reflected?
Yeah, yung uh, yung uh bagay na 'yan ma'am, no? Uh. If in the instance uh, wala dito, we'll, kasi yun yung trajectory natin.
Yeah, um, the the time re- wa- what I'm raising this one is. Mas maganda kung medyo clear tayo.
Yes po.
Um, when we say connectivity.
Yes po.
Um, for example, by air. Kasi crucial yung uh um parang to Basilan. Parang to Sulu, parang to Tawi-Tawi by sea. So, I guess that's very important that we incorporate in the document.
Definitely, definitely. Especially on the connectivity part, ma'am.
Um, on the macroeconomic targets.
Yes ma'am. Hmm.
Na yung poverty, which was already raised earlier. Ang hindi ko lang nakita kung may provincial disaggregation yung target.
Ah, meron po.
Meron siya.
Meron din po tayong provincial disaggregation.
May provincial disaggregation. It's already in the document.
Yeah, it's already part of the document. It's part of the assessment.
Um, next is, ang hindi ko lang gets. Sana kung yung isa, may dalawang indicators doon na sinabi na downward trend.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, medyo big siya. If it's not so clear, baka kailangan na lang i- umit.
Okay.
O wala kasing semblance of how do we achieve it eh.
Okay.
Delete na lang natin para hindi masyadong burden.
Hmm.
Medyo, kasi damami na yung targets mo, pero hindi namang klaro yung target mo. Diba? So, delete niyo na lang, kasi sub-indicators lang naman 'yan eh. Okay. Uh, on page seventy-two, vertical alignment. Um, I didn't see the L G U's in there. Baka kailangan nating ipasok. Hindi siya na mentioned. Okay?
Thank you ma'am, thank you. Vertical alignment.
Yung page ninety-seven, ninety-six, ninety-six, ninety-seven. And ninety-eight, uh ninety-seven, ninety-six, and ninety-seven. Ito yung. Parang kawawa lang yung parliament. Basahin ko sa inyo yung title, ha? The following are the key challenges in terms of legislation to be addressed in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-eight. Some enacted enactment of some priority uh slow. Enactment of some priority codes and other legislative measures. Okay naman, pero. Um. There are reasons behind, no? Baka yung yung choice of words, baka kailangan nating i-improve. Pangalawa is. Inadequate exercise of oversight function of the parliament. Ayaw ba yung may kasalanan? Pangatlo is is slow committee process. Ito yung sinasabi ko na parang wala tayong masyadong ginawa. Hindi naman natin nasalanan yung. I I think the problem is not the process at the committee level. No? There are other under- underlying issues. That can be point pinpointed other than this. So, baka kailangan natin itong i-improve. Now, I'm going to the last three. Yung Special Development Fund. Um, was it already embedded in the entire six year? Because the next six years will still be the the time that the SDF will be around. Pasok pa rin siya.
Hindi po siya na embed dito ma'am, yung related po doon sa SDF as explicitly mentioned in the document.
I think it's um one of the major um. Factors that needs to be considered in the plan. Because it talks about rehabilitation and reconstruction of conflict-affected areas. Which is basically the BARM. So, minus the SDF. Um, resources infusing into the plan. We are missing a significant. Um, significant uh resources and um. Uh, interventions that we could uh use. In order to address um poverty issues and uplifting the. Uh, lives of our uh decommission combatants as well as. Uh, improving the conflict-affected areas uh in the in the region. So. Parang ko lang yung plano kung hindi natin mapactor in yung SDF. Napakalaking pera po 'yan. I suggest that it should be incorporated, if it's not incorporated yet.
If uh, yung uh, referring to the term ma'am, no? Uh, kung yun ang hinahanap, wala. But uh, when we try to look at the document, for instance. Um, part of the development goal in at gaining peace, sustain. Kasama po doon sa sub- subsector objective. Yung uh former combatants, marginalized and vulnerable persons and communities transformed and empowered.
And maybe we can, we can uh address it better in the investment program?
Yeah, yeah, definitely ma'am. That will translate the program po.
Sige, um, last na, last na, last na. Ito very important, no? Kasi ang plano, plano lang 'yan. Pwedeng walang mangyari sa plano at pwedeng. Kagaya ng tinanong ko, hindi natin alam kung ano nangyari doon sa unang plano, kung plano lang 'yan. Um. My suggestions is that. Well, i- in the identified programs and projects, we should already identify. What are the big-ticket programs and what are those needing feasibility studies? And detailed engineering.
Yes.
So that in the next six years, we could start already the uh the preparation this year.
Yeah, yeah. That's very true. Tama ma'am.
Sige, wala nang nakikinig. Magunto na ako. Maraming, maraming salamat. My suggestion to um to the um VPDA is that. They will, they should start um looking at or enumerating or listing the priority. Uh, have big-ticket projects that need feasibility studies. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you for the inputs ma'am. Floor leader, what is uh, what is your pleasure?
Pinaka-last na po, pinaka-last na Deputy Speaker. Um, let's uh try to hurry up, kasi po prayer break yung. I'm agree.
Ako na, oo. Uh, ang ano po lang yun, that uh. May uh tatlong ports kami sa Basilan. We have, because uh John, it is a langang lamitan port. We have the Maluso port, Maluso port sa Maluso. Uh, that constructed by USAID, United States International Agency for Development. It's in our gateway to Sulu and of course to uh Tawi-Tawi and uh Sabah and uh Indonesia. It's a very good port, it's a good port now. And uh, it was originally conceptual, uh concepted as. Uh, fishing port. And after that, they constructed port. Uh, na pwede ibadilib 'yan, malapit 'yan sa Sulu, especially sa Luuk, sa Luuk in Sulu. And the other port is uh in Sumisip, Sumisip facing Silibis Sea. Daikindera kung halimbapana pwede yang diretsa sa Silibis. Passing the uh uh Basilan Strait, Basilan Sea, and Indonesian Sea. And the last uh port is Tuburan Port, sa Mamadagdari Municipality. Uh, it's facing the Morogor, Morogor 'yan. It's a very good port, that's very operational. So, may tatlong port siya na pwede natin uh apataport, patetagabitin sa ano, sa sa Basilan. And rather, ganun ganun. Yung BARM, hindi na ba katali 'yan sa development plan ng Governor ng Pilipinas? Labasta tayo, wala na.
Uh, yeah, uh, in-invite po tayo for uh the formulation of the PDP. Basically on two focus.
Yes.
Security, peace and security, and social. So, nag-input po tayo doon uh in crafting the PDP for the next six years po. So, yun po yung uh initially, yun yung uh participation po natin doon sa PDP. Ni uh President Mong Mong Monsieur Junior.
At uh last, tanong ka na, miss Tata. How is our coordination with our uh neighboring region? Halimbawa Region Nine, Region Eleven, Region Ten, ganun. Kasi kailangan 'yan, development kailangan may ano 'yan, may uh coordination, paki-anong ganun, the cost. Ang development natin connected din sa kanila.
Yes.
Ah, sa pagtalabuan Mindanao, na ano ganun, na pwede natin magconnect 'yan. Para ang development para pareho o kaya uh coordinated sa mga ano ganun. Ah, yun lang, sir. So, thank you, sir. Salamat.
Yes po. Uh, well-coordinated namang po tayo. Floor leader. In Mindanao. Please, floor leader, please terminate the the period of interpolation.
Okay, so, thank you very much to our Bangsa Mora Director General. And his team for uh facing the parliament today. Okay, so the assumption of rules, Mister, I move to resume.
There is a motion to.
Repeat the rules.
To reinstate the rules. Is there any second, is there any second? It's been seconded. There being no objection, the rules of the BTA Parliament are reinstated.
Okay, so on, Mr. Speaker, I move to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session, journal of the previous session.
There, there is a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal of the previous session. It's been seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
Move to approve the journal of the previous session, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve the journal of the previous session, subject to styles, been seconded, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Okay, uh, for reference of business on resolutions. Proposed Resolution Number One Forty-seven, may we request the Secretary General to please read the title and the authors of the resolution?
The Secretariat is directed to read the ra- the title of the first proposed resolution. Including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number One Forty-seven. Entitled Resolution Approving the Second Bangsa Mora Development Plan, BDP. Twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight of the Bangsa Mora Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Authors, members of the parliament, Si Eliah, Duma Alba. Raisa Judury, Marian Arnago. Ana Tarhad Abasman, and Joselle Rona.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat the resolution as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat proposed Resolution Number One Forty-seven. Uh, a simple resolution, it's been seconded, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
There is.
Irregular lang ni MP Mit.
Are there any interpolators so that?
So, no interpolation, but I move to close the period of interpolation. I move.
Now, we will dispense with the period of interpolation and amendment.
No, merong amendment po.
Amendment. There is a, uh, there is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation debate. And proceed immediately to the period of amendment. Is there any second? There being no objection, the motion is approved.
MP Mit move wishes to be recognized, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Lumayan Agelano del Sur is recognized. Ah, Lumayan, I'm sorry, uh, MP Ras. Um, uh, salaam, Mr. Speaker. We would like to propose uh whereas clause, as it was uh earlier established that. Uh, whereas. Whereas the attachment of the three uh, three appendices. Will be submitted to the parliament for approval at appropriate time. Attachments.
Uh, please uh mention what are those attachments?
The attachments are the RDIP, the matrices, and the research plans, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note. That should be written in the proposed resolution.
Yeah, yung sinili 'yan.
Then, the proponent, do you agree with the uh proposed amendment?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Then, Mr. Speaker. The, the next uh res- uh amendment is that uh. After the resolved clause, uh resolved uh further that. Uh, that there will be improvements in the, in the Bangsa Mora Development Plan. And this can be submitted, and this can be submitted to the Majority Floor Leader.
Improvements?
Yes, the improvements on the BDP can still be incorporated, uh, Mr. Speaker.
What, uh, if we are going to approve the resolution, you you will, the. The floor leader will still be sub- sub- uh accepting improvements, amendments to the uh BDP?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, because uh earlier, um, the, the, the proponent. Uh, were saying that uh there can be improvements, especially in the portions that are. Uh, in in our, in our control, for example, the description of the Legislative Parliament. And uh specific areas uh where it can be, still be improved, Mr. Speaker.
I I ask, may I ask the proponent, do you agree with the proposed amendment?
Yes, we accept, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note. So, are there any other proposed amendment?
None, Mr. Speaker.
There being none, I move to close the period of amend. Okay, MP Barkasha, please take the floor po.
The gentleman from uh, from the coastal area of Datuudin, Sin- uh Datu Blasin Swat is recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Regarding that uh proviso on the amendment, that it will be accepted. May I ask what would be the process? We will just submit? Or should it go through uh approval of uh the the independentary session?
Uh, short answer po is we will submit, and then we will forward to the BDP, BD- BPDA for incorporation, Mr. Speaker.
Now, uh, um, suppose the, uh. Ano ba yun, suppose they will not agree to the, to the amendment. Suppose I submit a a resolution, then uh, is it? Suppose as a bit a a resolution, then uh is it uh ipso facto, is it automatic for uh uh the development plant uh body to accept it?
Mister Speaker, the B D P uh invoke, well, it it is the framework that we need to sub- to pass um and submit to the D B M. But as mentioned by the uh member of parliament, Ampatuan earlier, the devil is in the details and the details will be the in the plans, in the attachments that we need to still approve in parliament. So the short answer would be that um the incorporation will uh be up to the B P D A, especially in those portions that are under the control of the parliament.
Alright, so it is clear that it will not go through us. It will just be in the B P D A. I think, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Floor leader, please close the period of amendment.
I move to close the period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to terminate the period of amendment. It's been seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
I move to approve resolution, proposed resolution number one one four seven, subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number one four seven, subject to style. It's been seconded. There being no objection. The proposed resolution number one four seven is hereby approved.
I move to adjourn until one thirty P M tomorrow, Mister Speaker.
There is a mo- uh session is adjourned until one thirty tomorrow afternoon.